Ready to go.
We're gonna be starting, and I just want everybody to know what will be happening is we'll be planning, uh, plan and board at the same time for the first item of business. So we're gonna be bouncing back and forth, uh, just so you understand the process. So I'm calling the Plan Commission of July twenty, twenty twenty-five to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Suncia.
Here.
Mr. Creed.
Here.
Mr. Hillbrand.
Here.
He's here from on, on Zoom.
Uh, Trustee Brochus.
Here.
He's here on Zoom.
Perfect. Uh, Trustee Cal later.
Here.
President Lincoln.
Here. All right, I'm calling the Village Board of Trustees meeting of July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five to order. Roll call, please. Bill, are you here for the board meeting?
Here.
Here.
Here. Trustee Borland.
Here.
Oh, Housekey.
Here.
Here, President Lincoln.
Here. All right, we're gonna stand for, uh, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, "One nation, undergo, in the liberty and justice of all."
All right, we're at public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the Plan Commission or the Village Board on any issue. Please observe the time limit of three minutes while the Plan Commission and Village Board encourages input from residents that may not discuss or act on any issue not duly noticed on the agenda. We're gonna start with the public comment for the Plan Commission. We'll start with, um, the reading of, um, comments that were sent to the village or the Plan Commission.
Sure, so I will start here. Um, so this one, um, is for twenty-eight thirty-five Church Street, Karen and Mark Rizzo. Um, their comment is, "How will the village, um, process make its decision as to what option will be selected as far as the roundabout? Since it directly affects my property, do I have a say as to which one? I'm assuming there are only two choices involved. Um, pedestrian safety, what additions are being included? Um, possibly, uh, Refuge Island or improved crosswalk? Number two, traffic flow, single lane or double lane? Number three, cost, um, involved, percent village and percent developer? Um, number four, prop- property, if any, is needed to be acquired for the use of either option? Um, another question, are utilities an issue? Um, need to be relocated or buried? Um, what the speed limit would be when complete? Any environmental issues, particularly drainage? Um, personal opinion and thoughts on the road revampment? First of all, they feel that the original plan of putting lights in, um, would have been a better way of controlling the traffic and increasing pedestrian safety. After all, the electric work has already been placed in that same location. There is a very high amount of everyday and all-day pedestrian presence. Roundabouts only add to the flow of traffic, they do not decrease it. This is our neighborhood and pedestrian safety should be the first consideration. Uh, another, uh, Marchstone comment, um, for, from Dennis Meyer, he's at twenty-eight twenty-nine Church Street. The traffic study that is mentioned is from twenty sixteen. Why not do an updated one now to see how much has changed in nine years? We need to control the flow of traffic at the intersection of, um, Highway P or Church Street and Military Road, not just for cars but for pedestrians, cyclists, skaters, scooters, uh, foot-powered and electric, and persons with disabilities. The use of a traffic circle might enhance traffic flow at the expense of pedestrian safety. It's bad enough the way it is now. Stoplights, stoplights, on the other hand, would allow for complete stoppage of traffic, allowing safe times for pedestrians to cross and mark to crosswalks. Proper timing, especially during peak times, should control the flow of both vehicular and pedestrian traffic, much safer than the proposed roundabout. Um, also, they state the fact that there are only two points of egress into an area that will most likely be the home to an estimated fifteen hundred, um, and then they say in parentheses, "Four hundred and thirty-two domiciles times three point five persons per domicile is fifteen, or one thousand five hundred and twelve individuals is ludicrous. Only counting the adults, times four hundred and thirty-two equals eight sixty-four vehicles pouring out of those two access points on a daily basis. That's not counting the number of people utilizing the golf course, which I won't even try to estimate. I would reckon, reconnect the other side of Military Road that runs behind Bear Park with Evergreen Parkway for a start, but also look for access to U.S. Highway fourteen as an additional third direct access point. While we're at it, can we please stop calling Evergreen Parkway the exit from the new development and start calling it, it what it really is, Military Road? Or at the very least, Evergreen Parkway via Military Road?" Um, another, um, Marchstone comment that was emailed to me, um, by Patricia and Jim McConnell. Um, they're from Black Earth. They are in complete agreement with Zebekwa recommendations, um, regarding a development that would be a boon to Cross Plains and the surrounding area or achieve, um, so they want to see, um, a one hundred percent infiltration rate and to conduct a serious sci- and science-based study on how to, if possible, safeguard the Black Earth Creek from the development and golf course that could introduce a number of harmful pollutants, including pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers. And then I have one more written comment. Bobby, can you tie me on this one? Because this one could be long. Okay. Thank you. Um, so this one is for Yurix. Um, he's at sixty-oh-one Loffenberg Boulevard. I'm gonna just let some folks in here really quickly. Um, so, "Dear Village Board members, I am writing to my full support, um, for the proposed development that includes a golf course. As a long-term resident of Cross Plains, I understand that growth is inevitable. Um, at present, we can guide the growth in a way that reflects our value, supports our economy, and enhances the quality of life for residents. Some members of the community have expressed concern about a study suggesting that people living near golf courses may have a higher risk of developing Parkinson's disease. The study, they argue, proves, um, an association between proximity to golf courses and increased Parkinson's diagnoses. However, the study did not directly measure pesticide levels and did not establish a causal, a causal relationship between golf courses and the disease. It raised questions worth, but it is important to keep that context in mind when drawing conclusions. What it brings from this conversation is the fact that Cross Plains is already surrounded by active farmland and that similar concerns about pesticide exposure have long been associated with agricultural land. Multiple epidemiologic, epidemiological studies have found a strong link between living or working near farmland and increased rates of Parkinson's disease. Meta-analyses show that general pesticide exposure is associated with a sixty percent higher risk of developing Parkinson's. A case-control study from Detroit found that individuals who worked in farming or had occupational exposure to herbicides or insecticides had a significantly elevated risk level. Other research confirms that even non-occupational exposure, such as living near cropland, contributes to elevated risk. Given this broader context, it is misleading to frame the proposed golf course as a unique or novel source of health concern. The types of pesticides used on golf courses are often similar to those used in agriculture. For a community like ours, the risk is not, is not new or unfamiliar. It is one that already exists and one that can be mitigated through best practices in land management, water monitoring, and community oversight. If anything, development presents an opportunity to put stronger environmental safeguards in place than are currently required of local farms. In addition to being environmentally manageable, the inclusion of a golf course offers clear and documented economic benefits to the community. Studies have shown that even a single course can create stable employment, generate tax revenue, and support tourism. A so- a survey in Oklahoma found that the average golf course supports eighteen full-time employment jobs, not including grounds maintenance, spanning positions in golf operations, food service, and administration. In Canada, um, the Kozinski's Country Golf Core, Country Golf Course demonstrated how one rural course could generate the equivalent of one hundred and seventy-five full-time jobs and contribute fourteen million Canadian dollars annually to their local economy through employment and tax revenue. These are not speculative time. Thank you very much. All right, and then I have, um, two public participation. Um, I didn't know if these would wanna be read during Plan Commission or if you'd wanted for Village Board. Um, I have Stacy and then I have Henry as well. If you wanted to wait for, um, the Village Board or would, would you like to come up now? Have the microphone.
Time for.
We are, Stacy, thank you. You're welcome.
I am also here to comment on the traffic study and proposed installation of the roundabout, intersection of Church Street and North Military Road. After reviewing the study, it was clear to me that current and planned, uh, proposed Marchstone development do not adequately meet the existing or protect, projected traffic volume demands. A third outlet is clearly necessary to ensure safety and reduce disruptions for current residents. Many residents, myself included, are concerned about the potential impact of a roundabout on pedestrian safety, property values, and overall quality of life. The study of underestimate the volume of farm traffics, semi-trucks, and other heavy vehicles that regularly use Highway P. Notably, the traffic counts excluded the nine AM to two PM period and were conducted during the winter when agricultural and landscaping vehicles are far less active. Additionally, I would like to hear input from our school bus drivers about the feasibility of navigating a roundabout, particularly when making a left-hand turn from North Military Road. While the roundabout may be designed to accommodate larger vehicles by allowing them to drive over it, it really seems unrealistic to me. The raised traffic island that's approximately a hundred and fifty feet north of the proposed location has already caused significant issues for large vehicles, um, in the, that it's done there. The traffic study states that signalized intersections not feasible due to projected traffic in twenty thirty-five and the potential need to demolish a residential property. However, many existing signalized intersections operate without dedicated turn lanes. And while the vast majority of northbound morning traffic turns right onto North Military Road, it's kind of suggests that maybe a turn lane isn't necessary. A traffic light could also help disperse traffic more evenly by encouraging drivers to use alternate routes, reducing congestion near our schools, which really needs to be a priority. The proposed plan also fails to address the longstanding pedestrian safety concerns along this stretch of road. Residents near the crosswalk can attest to how difficult and dangerous it is to cross due to that steady flow of traffic. Um, and the, the near misses are, are, are constant. Um, I lived there for forty years. The last ten, I had children attending school in the area, um, and we really need to do better, um, by our kids. I respectfully urge the Plan Commission and the Village Board to require the developer to reconsider the design. We need a solution that ensures long-term safety and traffic efficiency, not just one that's fastest or most profitable. Good infrastructure benefits everyone, and unfortunately, we've all seen the consequences of poorly executed projects in our village in the past. In closing, while growth is inevitable and potentially beneficial, I urge you to be the generation of leaders remembered for thoughtful, loving decisions during this critical period of expansion. Please prioritize the safety near our school. Protect our trout stream and the quality of life for all of our current and future residents. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Stacy.
Can you check to see if the phones are working in the back here? We cannot hear you at all.
We don't have a P A system. These mics are to record for the recording to be of the meeting. We're, we apologize. I don't think they have a.
There's no audio in this room, unfortunately.
The people that are gonna speak project a little loud so that everybody can hear what's being said.
Sure, absolutely. All right.
Who's the other one?
And then, did you wanna speak to the Plan Commission? You'd like to wait until Village Board? We're on Plan Commission right now. Yes, would you like to speak? Okay.
Did your name and address?
Yes. My name is Henry Nelslow, and I'm with the Southern Wisconsin Chapter of Trout Unlimited. I live in the Village of Oregon, but I'm here regarding the Southern Wisconsin Trout Unlimited. So I just, um, wanted to just, uh, thank the, the Board and the Planning Commission for postponing any recommendation regarding the first phase of the proposed development for the plastic ingenuity land. We hope this gives the village and residents' residents opportunity to address many questions that are raised, um, about the proposal. Um, first, we're concerned the proposed development will harm Fesky Spring and Black Earth Creek. Research in Southern Wisconsin has shown the connection between the amount of development in a watershed and the watershed stream's ability to maintain, um, healthy and robust aquatic life. Much of this plastic ingenuity land is a hillside. Would it, or is it both proximity to Fesky Spring, which is critical to Black Earth Creek being an excellent trout stream with a wild self-sustaining trout population and the web of life whose those trout depend on? This is a vital recharge area, an important source of the groundwater, and the spring discharges to the creek. Impairments to the spring will hurt the creek. We do not know how this change in infiltration will affect the amount and movement of groundwater available to Fesky Spring. Um, our Southern Wisconsin Trout Unlimited requests engagement, groundwater experts to study and report on the probable effects, uh, on these from the proposed development. We provided a letter, um, on the twenty-fourth of July that provides, um, more information about possible costs and suggestions for studying this. Um, we're not approving any phase of the proposed development until we are assured the development will not harm Fesky Spring with Black Earth Creek. So in summary, we're concerned the development will harm the spring and Black Earth Creek. Experts need to first study the impacts of this development, and we request that you do not approve in the proposed development until we are assured that it will not harm the spring or the creek. Thank you for the opportunity to comment, provide input on this important matter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Michelle Harris, did you wanna speak during this time?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Michelle Harris. I live, um, five-two-seven-eight John Wilkens Road in Azalea.
Thank you.
I'm a member of the Black Earth Creek Watershed Association Board of Directors. Uh, more than any other entity, the Village of Cross Plains has an outsized impact on Black Earth Creek because of its location in the headwaters. Keeping the water holding clean enough for the trout fishery, for kids to play in, for people to walk beside or paddle in, will take ongoing attention, effort, and financial support. We applaud the decades-long commitment by the Village of Cross Plains to implement projects to protect water quality, spring flow, the trout fishery, and recreational use of Black Earth Creek. The village has supported and funded continued USGS monitoring, the Xander Park Creek restoration, stormwater management, trout days, and construction site management. The land area, including the Marchstone proposal, has been on the horizon for eventual development for many years. Can this development be done in a way so that the creek is protected, potential flooding impacts reduced, and the springs that feed the creek are not jeopardized? Could there be a way for the creek and its source springs to even benefit from the development? Protection of Black Earth Creek and springs in its headwaters is greatly enhanced if one hundred percent of rainwater and snow melt from the Marchstone development infiltrates into the ground. In addition, harmful application of fertilizers and pesticides needs to be managed to safeguard surface water, groundwater, and springs. The Black Earth Creek Watershed Association has two requests. Number one, we ask that the Village of Cross Plains work with the Marchstone developer to achieve a one hundred percent infiltration rate, given the sensitivity of the resource. Number two, we ask that the cumulative impact of this proposed development, including a golf course, on surface water and springs flowing into Black Earth Creek, we study, and that safeguards and protections are placed before proceeding with additional approvals for the project. We recognize that any study should be a collaborative effort involving all interested parties, making full use of previous studies, existing information, and many professionals that could assist with this effort. It is well established that if the spring flow is diminished in quality or quantity, then Black Earth Creek will be degraded because of the large public and private investment in the creek and watershed. A cumulative impact study is a small price to pay to help ensure that Black Earth continues to be a high-quality resource into the future. We urge the Village of Cross Plains to continue to be a model for environmentally responsible growth in our watershed. Thank you on behalf of Zebekwa.
Thank you.
Thanks. Those are all the registered in-person comments I have. Is, was there?
Okay, can you check with anybody that want to make a statement that's on Zoom?
Yes. If you could raise your hand if you're on Zoom and you would like to make a comment to the.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, there isn't? Okay, well, let me just handle this now and then we'll come back to you. Anybody?
There's people that are still registering in person, it looks like. Is there anyone online? Please raise your hand if you'd like to make a public comment to, to the Plan Commission. I'm not seeing anyone on.
So, raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment to the Plan. Come on up, sir. Please state your name and, uh, address so we have record of that. Well, wait till you get to the mic, because then we'll have it on tape.
Mine.
Okay, yeah, I guess that's right.
Okay, now we have somebody online, but we'll take care of you first.
I'm, uh, Craig Allen. I'm a new resident here. I'm on, uh, seventeen-sixty-six Stage Coach Road. Um, I'm also the Director of Equatorial Research Center at a Big Ten university, just to provide relevant background. I've just a few comments I've written down. First, on traffic, the proposal, as I've seen it, will create a lot of traffic. And in the plans I see, instead of internalizing that traffic with an entry to Highway fourteen, developer would like to externalize the traffic to the families and communities of Cross Plains, both the town and the village. Developer states this is because of the cost and because traffic would ruin or hurt the golf course. This cost should be theirs to bear, not ours, and this disruption in traffic is much better on a golf course than on our streets. Second, very briefly concerning chemicals on the golf course, uh, I simply urge the Plan Commission and others to look carefully at independent assessments of those impacts. The effect size is far larger than the effect size of chemicals associated with agriculture. Um, and the publication is extremely recent and very legitimate as far as I can tell. And, uh, the Finding Commission meeting, uh, last month suggested, uh, adding with the, uh, uh, expert suggested by the developer, and I would suggest that perhaps a more objective, um, person be found. Third, a golf course in general, uh, there is a big push in golf courses on sustainable and green approaches to golf courses. And as far as I can tell, this golf course has none of those approaches, which include community engagement, um, limited and, and precision pest management, um, stream water conservation, importantly, native greens, native corridors, et cetera. I just don't see any of those elements in, in the plans right now. And finally, uh, concerning just smart growth in general, I don't really see elements of smart growth in this development. I don't know if smart growth is embraced by Cross Plains or not. I would hope so, but it looks like a, a fairly limited and pretty typical, uh, type of development. Looks to me like the developer is looking to maximize and internalize benefits while externalizing the many costs to the public in Cross Plains, but the town and village. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else would like? I thought I saw more than one hand. Oh, okay.
Is it me? Is it John?
No, no.
We're not gonna be online yet. We're still working.
They're all on you.
No, that's fine.
My name is Kelly Robinson. I live at thirty-fourteen Shady Circle. Um, I urge the delay of the approval of the Marchstone project at this point for the following reasons.
Speak up, we cannot hear you in the.
First is the lack of transparency with village residents. This development will undoubtedly reshape Cross Plains, and yet there has been very little effort to make information readily available and accessible to village residents in the months this has been discovered. Releasing a link for a hundreds-plus-page packet just days before your meetings doesn't give enough time for processing and feedback, and an opportunity for a three-minute public comment without discussion is not sufficient. I would urge you to hold a town hall on this project before any plans are approved. Discussions. Also, for the water temperatures, it's concerning that discussions for the funding of it are not appropriate for. Why is that? I urge transparency in this. For the golf course, I'd like to know the real effects of top twenty golf course in our town. Will there be big events or competitions held here? With the accessibility issues, please discover and disclose the full intentions of what this golf course will bring to the village. Also, the long-term health and environmental impact. It's not surprising that there was disregard for the AMA study from May of twenty twenty-five, not ten years ago, about Parkinson's. If the study was validated by Marchstone, it would undermine their own product. Please take time to do your own research on this study and validate that your constituents have a legitimate concern about their future health and well-being when living next to a golf course and all of the pesticides and chemicals that come with it. The truth is, you live here too. It's easy to brush this off as nothing, but do you really wanna take that chance with your own health? For the traffic, I am against the proposal of a traffic circle at County Highway P to accommodate the new traffic. In the best interest of our neighbors who live at the intersection and the people who need that intersection to lead their neighborhood with school traffic, a traffic circle would be awful. Infrastructure for a stoplight exists there, let's use it. Thank you.
You? Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me? Awesome. Uh, my name's Audrey Rice. I'm at twenty-seven-twelve Asser Street. Um, thank you again for provide, or allowing the public to provide input on this project. At the last planning meeting, I shared the concerns about how this could impact, um, the EMS and agreements that are considered, um, that will be presented today. Um, and I don't think it is a mistake that we're discussing two controversial topics tonight, um, all in the same meeting. I'm not sure how that choice helps build trust with the community. I'm sure there are reasons for this joint meeting, but it's hard not to feel like these conversations are now being rushed without space or time for the community to understand what's going on. Since EMS will be covered later, I'm going to focus on just the development for now. Um, at the last meeting, people clearly stated that affordable housing matters. The developer's response was, "I don't even know what affordable housing is." Um, that came across as very dismissive, and a more honest response would have just been to say that these houses don't need our median income for our community. And, um, if they really don't know what affordable housing is, that just raises another red flag for a developer. On top of that, not knowing what the affordable housing is, what have they provided to give us confidence in stormwater planning? There is no groundwater recharge modeling, no analysis of chemical runoff, no, uh, long-term maintenance or monitoring plan, no independent review of stormwater damage, just trust me. I'm sure the city of Madison trusted them when they said that Hoxley was trustworthy, and I'm sure the residents also. And I'm sure that trust dwindled as the flooding ensued. Um, I think a very notable, MSA, who was the firm hired by the city in twenty sixteen um, to study the issue, said, "While tools available for the original development were not as sophisticated as those available today, they certainly had the ability to prevent spectacular flooding that this neighborhood experiences, but reluctantly did not." Um, MSA also found that the detention ponds weren't even built as designed, um, so noteworthy. Um, these are just a few of many questions people have raised. I listened to the nearly forty-five minutes of concerns at the last meeting, and I share all of them with the community. And concerns only build as we bring in another issue EMS into the conversation. I hope that the village sees tonight as a chance to rebuild trust with the residents. I also hope that you choose not to move forward with Phase One tonight until we get more evidence that this is appropriate for our community. Um, holding two major discussions in one meeting is not a great way to start rebuilding trust, but we're all here to listen closely and hope for thoughtful discussion on both sides. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up.
With a thirty-sixty-one creek-side way, uh, Cross Plains. With a thirty-sixty-one creek side way, Cross Plains. I review plans professionally for the city of Madison. So I'm very familiar with, so I give my comments to the Plan Commission, and they take those and put action to them. Actually, I'd probably would have drawn this plat if I didn't get a new job two years ago. I used to work for Wiser Engineering. As far as the stormwater goes, from I can speak this part to the development. The engineer is a lot different in this case. I trust Wiser in their stormwater design, flooding and things like that. I do not believe will be an issue because I have trust in Dan and Adam. I worked with them for a long time. That being said, I still have issues with some of the stuff in the plat, mostly the connection to fourteen. I don't know, this way the city or the village has it planned right now is to keep the paper connection of right of way is what they're asking for. I don't know how that's all going to work out. But a direct connection would be better, be more ideal. I feel like that's being looked over, but a connection to fourteen needs to be made, might be at the expense of the town. I think if that's the avenue we're going on, I think maybe we look at a slightly larger annexation and take the existing cul-de-sac. That plat says a temporary turnaround at the time that development was given approval by the extraterritorial jurisdiction of this village. You know, there was a connection there to Bur Oak. So I don't know why the town is not allowing us to connect to it, and that connection, then it's going to affect those residents, and they're not going to be happy, but there's got to be some solution here to get down to fourteen. I don't see it being a very good development without a connection fourteen.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Come on up.
My name is Shelby Aker. I represent the Cross Plains Area Chamber of Commerce, so I'm speaking on behalf of them today. The Cross Plains Area Chamber of Commerce is pleased to offer its support for the Village of Cross Plains in pursuit of future developments with the owners of the property located in the Airport Road area. As the leading voice of the local business community, we recognize that the value that strategic and sustainable development brings to our region and our businesses. We acknowledge the present project allows a significant opportunity to enhance the economic vitality of our village. These elements contribute not only to economic growth, but also to a more vibrant community for residents, visitors, and business owners alike. The Cross Plains Area Chamber of Commerce is committed to fostering a strong local economy and believes expansion here aligns with our mission to support growth, collaboration, and opportunity through the Cross Plains area. We look forward to the village board, property owners, and relevant decision-making bodies moving forward with the project and ensuring a long-term benefit to the community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we'll go to who's on Zoom.
Yep, we can go with, let's go with John first. John Hutchinson.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, my name is John Hutchinson. I'm the former owner of Fontana Sports in Madison, and I'm an avid trout fisherman and a member of Southern Wisconsin Trout Unlimited. And I just want to interject that this Blackthrift Creek is such an economic engine for the Blackthrift Creek Valley that it's just, I mean, it needs to be noted. And I'm not against having a development in the area, but I think that we need to really watch for runoff and infiltration and really make sure that it's done well. I'm just a citizen, so I don't really know a lot about the plans. I just heard about this yesterday late in the afternoon. I haven't had a chance to look at them, but I just want to, you know, encourage the Planning Commission and the board to think wisely about what they do. Thank you.
Thank you. We can do, let's see here, who has their hand raised? Anyone else who has their hand raised? Oh, here we go. Matt, are you available to speak? Matt Kruger?
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Matthew Krueger. I'm a resident of Oak Valley Estates. I live at eighty-sixty-one Borough Trail. I just want to echo and support the concerns raised about the health of our watershed, including our groundwater, which my household and all of our neighbors here rely on. So I would love to see, would very much like to see a study based in science conducted on that. The second issue I have to mention came up during one of the previous comments. I feel the residents of Cross Plains stress and concern about the traffic load. As a resident of Oak Valley Estates, I can say absolutely, I've lived here for close to fifteen years. The connection at Bur Oak and Highway fourteen, Stagecoach, will not support that traffic growth from that development. It's already stressful to manage that intersection during peak commuting traffic times. I shudder to think about how dangerous navigating that would be. Not to mention, the road itself is not constructed to a standard that I feel would hold up to the load from the construction vehicles required to come and go in building that development. I think it would be an incredible cost to revisit that road after that. The last thing I want to mention is, my child, my youngest daughter, is enrolled to start at Park, and I know that there have been some comments about the safety of the development in relation to the traffic around the school. I would raise another concern, which is, how is Park modeled to handle that increased enrollment? We visited the school. The principal is an amazing person. And we're looking forward to having our daughter there, but I would be concerned about the expense represented in trying to support the additional enrollment required to meet that development's needs. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we will go with Chris Green. Chris, are you available to come off of mute?
Yes, I'm off of mute now, I think.
Yes, you are.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Chris Green. I live at seven-nine-eight-five Stagecoach Road, around the corner from Matt Krueger, who just spoke. My concerns are similar to his. But I'd add one thing. We were told that the developer had abandoned the idea to connect through Bur Oak. And then based on a document, I believe from the Planning Commission that I saw a few weeks ago, the developers were going to or were instructed to add that back. And it'll be a big disruption to our neighborhood if we have that much traffic added on Bur Oak and then down Stagecoach to fourteen. And I feel sympathy for or empathy for those earlier speakers who are concerned about access in their neighborhoods in the village. So I would say, take another step back and take another big look at this. A very wise man once told me, when you don't have easy solutions, sometimes there have to be some compromises. And we ought to take a very close look and decide what the best path forward is for my neighborhood, Oak Valley, and also for the village. Thank you.
Thank you. And we don't have anyone else online.
Good then.
To speak, right.
All righty, we'll move to public comment for the board. We'll start with reading.
Sure. All right, so the first one I have is from Shu Shuts, who is at twenty-seven-thirty Birchwood Pass. So this is regarding EMS. Address to Jay Langfield and the Cross Plains Village Board members. Why is the village board even thinking about taking over control of the EMS? It looks like a made-up problem or a situation that doesn't need fixing. How about leaving the EMS as it is and work harder at reducing property taxes? That's a real problem, or arranging to have lower-cost, affordable retirement housing for seniors who wish to stay in the village. It looks as though current personnel are doing a fine job running our EMS. Leave the EMS alone. It's obvious it doesn't need a takeover by the village board. Okay, I'll lift up my paper then. So I can project. All right. So this one is from Amy Kajal, and she is at fifty-oh-seven Loffenburgh Boulevard in Cross Plains. And so she says, please register my support of the EMS services remaining the same as they are. I would not like the village to take over the service. I have another. I have another one from Debbie Michaels. She is at twenty-one-sixty Hillenbrand Drive in Cross Plains. She said, I received a flyer in the mail regarding the possible changes to our EMS. I have concerns about making this type of change. I have had to use the service personally and was grateful for the quick response and care I was given. These individuals are volunteers. They are truly doing this because they care. That is not to say that paid individuals don't care, just that our volunteers care equally as much. I have a friend who was on our EMS, and I know that she took great pride in what she was doing, as I believe all of the current volunteers do as well. It seems that things are working well as they are, so I don't see the need for this type of change, which could potentially cause delayed response times and higher costs. I really hope we can maintain the volunteer services that we have. This one is from Charles Pierce, the Medical Director of Cross Plains EMS. I am writing to express my unwavering support for the current model and staffing of the Cross Plains EMS. For many years, CPEMS has been a dedicated, community-minded group of professionals who do not only provide excellent emergency care, but also collaborate seamlessly with our fire department, police services, and surrounding community EMS programs. This team has consistently demonstrated a commitment to both innovation and fiscal responsibility, qualities that are both essential and hard-earned in the challenging EMS environment of Wisconsin. CPEMS operates in a cost-effective manner while maintaining a growth mindset, continuously improving its capabilities and the level of service offered to our residents. Rather than reconsidering changes to a system that is working exceptionally well, I urge the board to recognize the significant value that CPEMS brings to our community. Our EMTs deserve the village's full-throated support and public praise for the professionalism, dedication, and compassion they bring to their work each day. Thank you for your attention to this matter and for your continued efforts to ensure that Cross Plains remains a safe and supportive community for all. Please know I am unable to attend the board meeting in person, so as I will be traveling for my yearly military commitment on the East Coast, do not hesitate to reach out to me by phone or email. And then I think we have, we have just a lot of people that want to speak that are here, and then I know there's a list in the back as well. But I'll go through this stack that I have first, and then I'll grab the sheet of paper in the back. Katrina McKee, would you like to speak?
My name's Katrina McKee. I live at twenty-two-fourteen East Street here in Cross Plains. My name is Katrina McKee. I'm an ER nurse and a volunteer A E M T for CPEMS. Part of my career in twenty-fifteen because I believed in the motto, neighbors helping neighbors. Cross Plains has long been a place where community has always been a drawing factor, and this proposed takeover really undermines everything our community stands for. In this presentation, Mr. Langfield will leave you to the one vote and the fifty-eight-point-four percent the village but the percentages are a mathematical formula meant to divide costs based on population, property taxes, et cetera. You need to remember that those numbers can change if any municipality gives or takes away territory. Once districts are split up, it's extremely difficult to get them back. With the proposed takeover, we would lose municipal partnerships. The village will pay for everything, increasing occupancy costs, leaving the potential for denying other departments money to fund new equipment or personnel essential to their operations. Even by his own admission at the July EMS board meeting, Mr. Langfield said there is no financial gain for the village in this proposal. The village would also no longer have the assistance from the Volunteer Association, who raised funds to help purchase needed equipment for the new ambulance. There is no positive in this takeover. Everyone will lose something. Mr. Langfield has a grievance with the EMS district. There are procedures in place for grievances. They are outlined in the district agreement. As a retired police officer, he should know how to follow procedure. Instead, he has chosen not to include the village board in conversation about the EMS district and his concerns. He has chosen not to follow procedure. He's chosen to follow his own agenda for his own purposes. This is not someone who has the best interests of his village in mind. For forty-seven years, this department has functioned well under the guidance of a core municipality partnership. Yes, we've had a few hiccups in the last five years. I won't deny that. However, Chief Alexon has shown extraordinary leadership and department management skills to keep us within and under budget, to increase our staff, reduce costs, decrease response times, and to find new ways to benefit our community. She offers full transparency to anyone who would like more information on how the department is operated. She has worked tirelessly to form a working partnership with the Volunteer Association, which has fostered fundraising for equipment and supplies that the department needs. The negativity surrounding this issue affects my family and I. I grew up here. It has been an area of tension when I am running errands in town or at gatherings as people stop me to question me about the village's reason to give us takeover. All of this negativity spreads, creating toxicity and distrust. At this time, I urge you, think to yourself, do I want people who know this village, who want to be part of the community, to be the ones to come to my aid? Or do I want someone who has no connection to the community? If you approve this takeover, you will no longer have neighbors helping neighbors. You will have strangers bored here for a paycheck. Look around this room. Look at all of us that are here, as EMS members, as friends, neighbors, family, and ask yourself, if that was my family or my friends standing here in front of me, would I want them to be in the position where they feel that their village thinks so little of them and the important work they do, that they would allow one person to forever change the landscape of the important work to the negative?
Thank you.
The next one I have is Jonathan S Z E.
This is Lee. Yeah, they called.
Jonathan?
You can sit up there, Lee, and we can take you next. Yeah.
No big deal. Watch your chairs. That's okay.
All right. Hi, I'm Jonathan. I live at Seven North Randall on Madison. I just want to give like a student perspective. I started working here about a year ago. I'll be a pre-medical senior. And I didn't really know anything about Cross Plains until I started working here. I was recommended by two really good friends. They said the community is amazing and the work environment is so encouraging. And in the last year, I've learned this to be true. I feel that I've gained so much hands-on experience, patient experience, just grown as a person, and with Cross Plains, I don't think I could have done that or without Cross Plains. And the great thing about Cross Plains is that we get a great amount of calls, but also there's time when there's, when we are off, that I can still focus and do homework and crunch it in, so I can keep up with academics. With lower call volumes, in the case of a takeover, I would I would think that some students may go to other services for, you know, better, more experience. And this could significantly impact the community of Cross Plains, just because there would be less time, less volunteers coming in and helping everyone. And it would also affect like the future generation of EMTs and healthcare providers, because they aren't getting that hands-on experience that I did. So I just want to say I am against the takeover. And I think that it is, in the best case, of people in my position and the community of Cross Plains to continue to grow as is.
Hi. My name is Lee Swanson. And I've been a resident out here for sixty-some years, and I ran the bank.
We can't hear you back here, sir.
Okay, he's trying his best. So listen, we just got to be patient. That mic doesn't do anything but put it on to the computer recording. It doesn't, it's not a PA system. There's no audible.
I'll talk louder, how bad.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Lee Swanson. I've lived out here for sixty-five years, something like that. And I presently live just outside of town on five-zero-five. And I presently live just outside of town on five zero five three County KP. Over, we call it the swamp. I worked here. And I've been involved with EMS. I was an EMT for seventeen, eighteen years. I did everything from delivering babies to bringing somebody back from a heart attack that would have killed them. Every kind of accident you can imagine. And I'm so proud of our uh EMS people. The town of Berry happens to be part of that, and I just live inside of the township. And I'm very concerned about uh the action that the village wants to take relative to our EMS service. And um I think it needs a lot more thought and I think it needs to consider all of the areas that our EMS service happens. As well as the training that is now for our EMTs to be qualified to run a service. And inasmuch as I live in the town of Berry and Cross Plains covers Berry and Cross Plains. I think it's important that we give serious thoughts to uh not engaging those people in the continuation. And I did everything from delivering babies to bringing somebody back from a heart attack that would have killed them. I've been up in the damnedest places you can think about trying to get people out. And we have those people working here now. And I think that again, uh, there's not a reason, at least I don't know what your reasons are to change what has been very successful to date. So I'm here to look for support and and reasons why we need to not include the close township people that are the closest for our Cross Plains EMS service. Uh, not Middleton and not Black Earth or someplace else, but right here, so that's my whole reason for coming in. I would hope that the village board would think again about limiting representation for our EMS service. And thank you, board, for giving us the opportunity to come.
Thank you. Alright, we got Jordan Zimmerman.
I'll speak up so everyone can hear me. I talk really loud. That's really good for everyone. So my name is Jordan Zimmerman. I actually live at W five seven eighty Finder Road in Johnson Creek, Wisconsin. And I am coming to address the board. Um, I'm speaking out on behalf of my strong support to not raid our community of Cross Plains EMS. We currently have many staff on our team who are further qualified than at the basic and advanced EMT level that are able to have that special understanding of emergent situations. Therefore, being able to provide a higher quality of care in a timely fashion. We have members of our board and team here that includes MAs, pre-med students, ski patrol, paramedics, police officers, ICU and ER nurses, all with backgrounds that support us more than at the basic level. Although, yes, we do continue to operate within our scope of practice, we also have a knowledgeable baseline far beyond. To have this advanced training and knowledge only improves patient care and better outcomes and gives our department a standout recognition. Private services do not have the staff like this. They do not have that direct relationship or communication with the departments that we have now. This includes our relationships with fire, police, neighboring services, and our local emergency departments. We only have the opportunity that have the great staff that we do because of the flexibility in our scheduling. Unlike private services who require specific shifts in times to work. Not having this would decrease the amount of our staff that would be able to maintain this type of work due to their full-time jobs. I use myself as an example. I am a full-time ER nurse for the UW Emergency Department downtown. I am specially trained in trauma, geriatrics, and pediatrics. I bring all of my advanced training back to our department and help teach and educate other members of our staff each month. As well as keep that open communication and foster those relationships. I would not be able to continue doing this if a private service were to take over. Fun fact, your brain can only go four to six minutes without oxygen before there's permanent brain damage. Time is key. Time is life. Waiting too long for another service to come into our district because we are no longer here could cost someone their life. Our department around us have high call volumes and are stretched thin, and we need to prioritize the people of our community, especially when we can get there faster. It is also my understanding there is a false perception that all of our staff live within the Cross Plains Area EMS. That is simply not accurate. I again speak for myself. My home is fifty two point one miles from the Cross Plains Area EMS building. It takes me fifty six minutes one way without any delays to come and work here. Why do you ask that I do it? I do it for many reasons. We have one of the best training programs in the county, again, something that a private service would not have. Private services commonly keep to the basic training and do not truly invest into much of the community-specific trainings and education. Just as private services do not commonly get involved with community events such as trout days, the horrible hilly, and blood pressure checks at the senior center. Chief Alexon is a phenomenal chief. She is asked to do what many of us say is the unthinkable with very little compensation and compared to other chiefs throughout Dane County.
Thank you.
Uh, Rachel Kubli. Rachel Kubli.
Name is Rachel Kubli. I live at fifty two eighty seven Corner Court in Wannakee. I'm here as a volunteer. I've been volunteering for ten years for the Cross Plains EMS. My name is Rachel Kubli and I serve as the treasurer of the Cross Plains EMS Association. I'm here today to respectfully but firmly urge you not to vote in favor of the village taking over EMS services. A top-down restructuring risk fracturing this team, weakening morale, and direct disrupting the continuity of care residents in their most vulnerable moments. Our EMS system is more than operational. It's a model of community-supported compassionate emergency care. The Cross Plains EMS Association, a registered five oh one three nonprofit, has played a critical role in keeping our EMS agency equipped. Responsive and financially sustainable. All of our funding comes from donations from the residents. Not just in the village of Cross Plains, but also from the surrounding townships that make up our district. Thanks to the support of our communities, the association has been able to purchase vital equipment over the years. In our Zoll Calliaf Monitor, it's replacing the batteries, our portable suction, our scare chair, Lucas device, our Kendrick traction device, pediatric restraint systems, and many other things that keep both the ambulance and our EMS station running effectively. But that was a product provided by the association. Isn't it just about convenience? It's about life-saving and protecting our providers. For example, the Lucas device delivers high-quality, consistent chest compressions, improving up patient outcomes while reducing the strain on us EMTs. This scare chair will protect both of the patient and us responders during difficult extractions. These tools allow us to provide better care and preserve the health of our long time and the longevity of our EMS professionals. We would not have access to these highly important important tools if it were not for the association's contributions. Later this year, a new ambulance will be arriving, and I believe this purchase simply could not have happened without the financial support of our community and the association. We are contributing at least close to sixty thousand dollars towards this critical investment. This is not a small contribution. It is a result of years of successful fundraising, responsible financial management, and unwavering generosity of our community. If the village votes to take over EMS, the association would dissolve. With that, all of the funding will end. As a five oh one C three, our remaining funds will not be distributed to the village. In accordance of our bylaws, we will disperse them to disperse any remaining funds to another nonprofit such as the fire department. This provo- proposal threatens to dismantle a trusted, proven system and replace it with costly, uncertain, with a costly and uncertain model. It dismisses not only the substantial financial support already invested, but also invaluable relationships, culture, and trust that are the heart of our EMS service. I urge you to respect the contracts in place, recognize the value of what already exists, and vote no in the village taking over EMS services. Thank you for your time and your dedication to the people of Cross Plains.
Derek Bates. Derek?
My name's Derek. I technically live at three places right now because I have great leases because Madison leasing is not fun. I won't list them all. I am here to firstly echo all of the concerns that you have heard from current EMS members and current community members and more instances that will come in the many of the public comments we have. And take a broader look at what is happening here in Cross Plains EMS. Many people have mentioned that Cross Plains EMS has volunteers and part-time members from all across the Dane County. This is important. Cross Plains EMS and notably our current administration has done an incredible job at producing an environment which builds up EMT basics, pre-medical students, police officers, ski patrol members, and many other individuals. I urge you to consider the role that Cross Plains EMS has in Dane County EMS as a whole, future paramedics, and future medical providers. Wannakee and Middleton, the two services which will be taking over if this village proposal passes for the townships of Berry and Springfield as per what they have said in the EMS board meeting. Those two services are made of primarily paramedic-level individuals. They are not funds into building up EMT basics and people from all across Dane County and providing better human care, not here, but in all of Dane County. I know many people here who are moving on to be medics. I never considered possibly becoming an EMS member for life. And it's a career outlook I have now because of the administration we have now. I urge all the village board members to consider what this proposal will do to the future of EMS in Cross Plains and in Dane County as a whole. Thank you.
PJ Robinson?
Alright, hi, my name's CJ Robinson. I live on Shady Circle here in the village, um, a village resident and a member of Cross Plains EMS. Uh, there is no clear compelling reason for the proposal of the village to assume control of Cross Plains EMS. There's no urgent uh or future problem that's been identified, no strategic or financial benefit that has been laid out. One of the concerns is in regard to budget increases. The village's district representative voted for the very pay increases now cited as a concern. These are necessary pay increases after years without adjustment adjustments, and even now, part-time wages remain one of the lowest in Dane County. The proposal suggests the village takeover will provide administrative help to the chief at the price of three thousand dollars per month increase to the budget. There's been no discussion of this with the Cross Plains EMS board and no plan to manage the added workload for the village employees. There's no evidence that this kind of help is even needed, has been requested, or would be helpful. Any criticism of the past leadership should not be applied to the current EMS chief or staff who continue to serve with professionalism and dedication. Proposal calls for plans for the for community EMS services. While this initiative is valuable, is not conceived by the finance committee. It's created through the independent initiative of the current chief and deputy chief to enhance care, promote prevention, increase community involvement, and support post-hospital discharge patients. This important work is already underway and does not require a village takeover to succeed. Here's what they won't mention. It was openly stated in the last finance committee meeting that the proposal will not save the village any money. There's been no financial analysis or valuation of district EMS assets, which the village would need to pay just over forty percent of that value to buy out the district members. This includes the building, the ambulances, and all the operational equipment. It has been openly stated in the finance committee that there's no viable transition plan to move the services to a third-party provider or another EMS service. Has been openly stated in the finance committee that the only current plan appears to be a vote asking, are we doing this or not? There's no agreement from our neighboring towns to let the village-run service operate in their areas. Losing that service would increase village costs, reduce call volume, and impact current volunteers. It's deeply troubling that this village would move forward with a plan that increases spending, decreases collaboration, and jeopardizes emergency services, especially in a time of population growth and increased service needs of the community. At the center of this disruption is the village's district, the village's district representative and finance committee chair Jay Langfeld. His actions alone have eroded the trust of other district members and EMS personnel. His leadership on this matter is not reflected, though partnership and transparency our community deserves. I respectfully call on this board to replace the village's representative on the EMS district board and focus on repairing this divide. It's time to start rebuilding trust and supporting one of the most effective community-based EMS services in Dane County.
Kelly Robinson? Kelly Robinson?
Kelly Robinson again, thirty four years in the circle. Um, just like to express my support, everything that they've been saying. I oppose any village proposals for changes to the EMS. As someone familiar with those in the department, firmly support the current group. Their incredible level of service to this community and the efficient and strong management of the department. I'm so grateful for what you do for our community. As a resident, I'm extremely unhappy with the time and resources being spent on disrupting such a vital resource in the community for what can only be seen as a polygraph. Leave our emergency medical services alone.
Anthony Lange. Anthony?
Hello, everyone. I'm Tony. Um, I've been a volunteer here with EMS for about three months. I'm also a student at UW. But I did grow up here in the community. I went to school here. Um, but I did live in Blue Mounds. There's really two reasons for me why I don't like this takeover idea. Slower nine on one response times for those living outside the community. And then two students and kids like myself growing up in the community might miss out on some special opportunities that I've been gifted. Um, some context behind that first point there. I'm a beekeeper for Gentle Breeze Honey. On any given year, we have between thirty-two and sixty-four honeybee colonies located in the town of Berry. About four years ago, um, one of my beekeepers developed an allergy. Um, he got stung too many times, so I had to call Cross Plains. Luckily, they responded in time. However, if the takeover succeeds, something like that may not happen. Um, and then as for the second point concerning kids in the community. If the district breaks apart, there is a substantial drop in call volume, leading students to seek healthcare experience in other places. Um, and then I'm also afraid that many of the part-time employees will leave. This would lead to some of the community interactions um going away due to a smaller staff. These interactions could include teaching kids in the community CPR, showing them the ambulance. Among other things, those are just some of the things that I remember growing up here in the community. Um, so please think about that when you're making your decisions about the future kids growing up in this community. Thank you.
I have four more.
Yeah.
Um, and then I have Brian Pitt.
Good evening. I'm Brian Pitt. Um, I live at thirty sixty Neeson Street here in the village, and I'm also the deputy chief of the department. Um, you've all heard a lot of the reasons that why this, uh, people are against this idea. I would like to explain why the proposed withdrawal and subsequent village takeover of EMS services would be detrimental not only to intermunicipal provision, but also to the effective operations and morale of EMS personnel who serve us all. Some of the things that the finance committee will put in front of you are the recent budget increase as one of the main reasons for withdrawing from the district. However, it's important to understand that this increase was necessary to bring the administrative and full-time staff wages into alignment with comparable EMS agencies in our county. This is not a repetitive increase. That was a one-time increase. This shared governance approach with the district has been and continues to be a hallmark fairness and collaboration. You'll also hear that the finance committee believes that by taking over the district, the village could provide administrative support. Yet, the current EMS chief, who is already supported by a neutral third party, has not asked for this help. Uh, the idea that the village alone holds the key to a The idea that the village alone holds the key to effective administration overlooks the success we are already seeing and diminishes the credit due to the chief and her staff for their efforts. High chief turnover. While it's true, in the last five years, we've had three chiefs. The current chief has served for over twenty-seven years with this department and as chief for over a year and a half, managing her responsibilities effectively and consistently. She has made no indication that the workload is unmanageable. Her competence and dedication are reflected in the efficiency she's introduced, as well as a robust membership growth since her tenure began. We have close to fifty members on our department. That is near unheard of in other agencies around Dane County. The finance committee also cites the previous chief's embezzlement over $40,000 as evidence of a systemic financial mismanagement. Yet that theft was discovered by our interim leadership demonstrating integrity and accountability from within. Further safeguards, including a two-party oversight system, have been implemented by the current chief to prevent any repeat of such issues. Pointing to the past incident ignores the present safeguards and improvement procedures that exist today. The chief's dual role. The chief not only serves as an administrator, but she is taking calls as well. This is not negative. This dual perspective is critical. A chief who is both an EMT and an administrator has direct insight into patient care and the operational needs of the service. Under her leadership, we have succeeded in recruiting nearly fifty members at a time when many departments nationwide struggle to cover shifts and maintain fast-for-times.
Thank you.
Holly Elixon? Chief Holly?
You ready, Bobby? Alright, hello. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Holly Elixon, and I have been the chief of Cross Plains EMS for the past year and a half. However, I have been at Cross Plains EMS for the past twenty-seven hours. The finance committee's absurd plan to tell the village to take over the EMS has the following things: large budget increase. Please know that the EMS board votes to increase the budget. The increase in question was made before I took office and was because of a previous chief's increased pay to volunteers and full-timers. EMS does not get a yearly raise as you might get in a regular job. It has been six-plus years since volunteers received a raise in their stipend. EMS does not have anything fancy that we don't use. We work within our budget. Did you know that we had $132,000 in excess funds at the end of twenty-four? Did you know we have money in our emergency fund and capital account fund? Did you know that we apply for grants to help the budget every year? Chief turnover: three in five years. Again, it's not the EMS's fault that lies with the EMS board and who they hire. You will hear about an unsustainable workload. I was hired for a forty-eight-hour work week. Do you know what a farmer, a parent, a business owner, and this chief have in common? None of us work a forty-eight-hour work week, but we have pride and ownership in what we're working on. I'm pretty sure you want an EMS chief to oversee what's going on, to always be ready for anything, and to be available when you need her and to make sure staff is always on point. I've made EMS and healthcare my life. I have a healthy work-life balance, and my immediate and extended family are well aware of what my job is. And now if the pager goes off or the phone rings, it needs to be answered. Concerns following $40,000 in theft resulting in four felonies. I found that we had a crime policy and filled out papers for insurance and the IRS. We received just over $36,000 from that policy. We met with auditors and now have a list of checks and balances over bills paid, accessing the credit card, and doing payroll. You will see in your handout and a letter from the bookkeeper who will tell you our books have never been cleaner, up-to-date, and correct. The finance committee's last concern is that the chief has to be a practitioner as well as an administrator. Of course I do. The left hand must know what the right hand is doing. This is how I get information from the state and Dane County and can make sure our staff forty-seven have what they need. Are they following the rules and regulations set for them? And I can run with them on different calls to make sure their patient care is on point. If you agree with the finance committee, I can tell you the current municipalities will take their territory and give it to other EMS services. The village will have no choice but to increase cost to the patients in order to make ends meet. I urge you to stop to issue before it gets bigger and destroys EMS. The Cross Plains Area EMS is here for all the communities it serves. The four choices you are given by this committee are dangerous and short-sighted. You need to ask yourself, who do you want to answer when you call 911?
Kelly Powell?
Kelly Powell, eight-eight-one-three Airport Road. I am a volunteer with both Cross Plains Fire and EMS. I'm here tonight to express my deep concern about the finance committee's proposal to take over EMS. I have served as a volunteer with EMS for five years and serving twice as interim chief. The Cross Plains EMS district has been in its existence for the past forty-seven years. When I started with the service, we had a total of eight volunteers, and I was running sometimes five days a week just to get the rig out the door. I was burnt out, and the amount of time I was spending on call was taking a toll on my mental health and my relationship with my family. Since then, we have worked so hard to become the service we are today with close to fifty members. It's the most members in the history of Cross Plains EMS. If the village takes over, I have no doubt we will lose the majority of our staff to neighboring departments, and Cross Plains will be back to where we were five years ago. I can confidently say I will not be putting the amount of hours I was putting in when we had eight volunteers. Tonight, you will hear the finance committee's proposal to take over EMS. They will tell you they want to take the load off of our current chief. I highly suggest having that conversation with her because I did. I think her answer is quite different than the picture Jay is painting. Another reason they will tell you is that the village pays fifty-eight percent of our budget, and they only get one vote. Keep in mind, the village uses fifty-eight percent of our service. Jay could have proposed to the EMS board that he would like another representative from the village to add another vote and could have started the mediation process. Their last reason, if that's what you want to call it, is their concern of having three chiefs in the past five years. Jay will tell you they left because of the workload. That is far from the truth. When I served as interim chief, I reported inconsistencies to Jay in regard to payroll, maternity leave, and other items. The most recent chief left because she stated she never wanted the position in the first place. If the village of Cross Plains takes over the service, it would be absolutely detrimental not only to the village but to the other communities we serve. Please consider putting yourself in the community member's shoes. How would you feel if you had a family member that needed help but no nearby ambulance to respond and no personnel to answer the call? Please keep in mind that when this proposal is presented to the village representative, it is going to tell the community that he intends to continue offering EMS service the way it is now. However, the other municipalities may not and do not have to contract with the service, and that is going to negatively impact the citizens that live outside the village. Finance committee put this proposal together and listed several options, but no option to keep it the way it is today. If that truly is an option, then why wasn't it added in there? Again, proving that Jay is running on a private agenda. This proposal has no cost savings and in fact is going to cost the village more money. I'm asking the village trustees to please vote this absurd idea down, let Cross Plains EMS continue as we operate today. I'm also asking the trustees to consider replacing the village representative on the EMS board with a trustee who's willing to have our back and someone who wants to have a good working relationship. Jay has sabotaged that relationship. Let's work together. We are growing in a positive direction, and we want to continue serving the communities we love and live in.
Tim Powell?
Name's Tim Powell. Live at eight-eight-one-three Airport Road in town of Cross Plains. I'm here to state my concern on the Cross Plains finance committee proposal to have the village of Cross Plains take over the EMS. I'm here to state that this will not benefit village, the other surrounding towns, or anyone receiving service from Cross Plains EMS. In the finance committee's proposal, they state that this will not save the village any money. If you look into the numbers, you will realize that it won't save any money and instead cost the village money. They say that this proposal would bring an additional sixty-two-and-a-half hours to village staff costing thirty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars a month. How do they expect the village staff to take on an additional sixty-two-and-a-half hours a month? We have asked this question but get no answer. They claim that they want to relieve some administrative duties off the chief because she is overworked. The only time they have asked the chief if she is overworked was right away when she got hired. If they really think she is overworked, why has no one asked her and seen what they could do to help? The Cross Plains EMS has taken steps to make sure there is checks and balances in the system. This costs the Cross Plains EMS district six thousand a year. Village takes over, it will cost three thousand five hundred and thirty-six a month. If you sit back and look at all the information, you will find no pros to the village taking over, just a bunch of cons. This is all stemming from the village representative wanting power and to be able to have all to say. If he truly believes that the chief is overworked and is concerned about workload, why has he never run with the chief to ask her or come down to the station and ask around? What better you have to bring up to the district meeting? I want to encourage the board to vote this idea down, let EMS operate like it has been, and keep the patients first and not politics. I'd also like the board to replace the village representative on the district board. He now has ruined his relationship with EMS. We'd like to have him replaced with a relationship that can start to get fixed. I also want to end by stating that the other towns are not favorable despite what Jay is going around telling people. Dave Woffenberger from the town of Springfield cannot make it tonight, but you asked me to speak on his behalf. The town of Springfield is not in favor of the village of Cross Plains taking over Cross Plains EMS. We feel the EMS service is being managed and running smoothly and with the staff and volunteers currently in place. We would not want to jeopardize that by having the village take it over.
And I just had another list of comments. I don't know if Jessica Bouchard, if you wanted to speak?
Morning, I'm Jessica Bouchard. I live in Sun Prairie, Wisconsin. Hello, village board, and everyone else who's taken the time to be here today. I'm an employee of Cross Plains EMS that I was formerly employed at Marshall Area EMS. I come bearing a cautionary tale of the integration of Marshall and Sun Prairie. While there were slight differences in jurisdiction and causation, you will find that you face a heavy decision here that could have lasting consequences, just as we did in Marshall. I urge you, the decision-makers, to read the facts and compare the situation to Marshall. Right now, the village of Marshall would like to go back to how it was. I want you to look further into the future of Cross Plains and imagine that the jurisdiction changes in such a way that you could never revert back to its original agreement. Look further past the point where there would be liquidation of assets. The amount of fundraising to rebuild what started forty-seven years ago would be impossible, just as Marshall is now realizing. Even if they wanted me backed, I'm employed here and I'm happy. I wouldn't. The contracts with another company will not show you show up to trout days, post-national night out, or even know that there's a person in our jurisdiction with an adrenal disorder who is a child and needs special care. There would be no more neighbors helping neighbors. But let us go back slightly. There would be a decrease in call volume, and we would lose our jurisdictions. When that happens, we will lose the volunteer students, who by the way, only get paid three dollars per hour. While they're not going to get extra experience that they need if this happens. When they go, the friends that they brought here will follow. If you lose staff, you will force overtime, and then you'll go out of service. And if nobody wants to fill that overtime, the burnout will only compound and turnover and staffing will occur. Once that happens, you lose revenue and end up in a downward spiral, leading to a dead-end road with no options left. Do not take this decision lightly. Look into all of the facts and listen to all of the boots on the ground who are here today speaking to you. We need your confidence in us in order to continue to be under budget like we were in 2024, to multitask and wear multiple hats like Chief Elixon does flawlessly. We need you to believe in the staff that is already working here. Please consider the irreversible consequences of this decision. That was the end of my speech, but I have thirty seconds left, and I want you to think about who has come up to this stand, people who are eighteen years old volunteering for three dollars an hour, and people who have been here for forty years. We're here standing strong today. We don't want to leave. Don't kick us out. Thank you for the opportunity and come at the base.
I have Kathy Stotts.
My name is Kathy Stotts. I live at seventy-seven eighty Martinsville Road, Cross Plains. Town of Springfield. I feel like with what you want to do, you're forgetting about us. We don't have a village. We do all our business in Cross Plains, and it feels like one person wants to forget about us. I'm a retired nurse. I worked in cardiac. It doesn't take long for somebody to die if they don't get the help. Living in Martinsville. If you guys go this route and just be in Cross Plains, I have to rely on Wanakee or Middleton. And the time constraints can get really bad, and I could die. It's scary. In Martinsville alone, there are so many retired people that have health issues. Those people over there, keep them safe. They're volunteers. They do it out of the goodness of their heart. It's not a company, a CEO, a corporation taking over. That's what it sounds like to me. And you know what? I talked to people in my village, and nobody knows about this. You guys have kept this as much of a deep, dark secret as you can for Cross Plains. It's frustrating. We've got a good system. Let's keep it going. My family supports them. We donate to them. We donate to the fire department. We donate to the police department when they want something. Cross Plains is our community because we don't have a town in our township on this side of Highway twelve. Really? I just get upset because people forget about the people that really is this community. Thank you.
Audrey Rice? Audrey Rice? Oh, you already spoke? Okay. And maybe Shelby, Tim Heniman, did you already speak? Nope, you're ready.
Alright, I'm Tim Heniman. I live on forty-eight sixty-one Brewery Road. It's about oh, quarter of a mile from the police station, but it's the town of Berry. So, anyway, my wife and I have been Berry residents for thirty-two years. And we've lived in the village before that. We were there when the EMS started. So for the last forty-seven years, we've been donating to the EMS, to the fire station, to the police department. Anytime they have a fundraiser, we write them a check. And now, I'm seventy-three years old. My wife and I are to the age. Why should we have to call the county when the cross plane Berry EMS is a mile and a quarter away? You know, we're at that age when we need it. And now you're going to force us to go elsewhere? After forty-seven years, you know, we've been backing everybody. The EMS likes where they are. They work well with the fire department. They work well with the police department. You know, I can't say any more than that. Back them up, keep them going. One other comment I would like to make is, I can't believe this meeting is is working with Wisconsin open records law because half the people here can't hear them. The guys down at the end, they can't hear this lady announce a name. I have a hearing deficiency. I can't hear her call a name. So anyway, that's another thought. Keep the board open, keep the EMS, and keep the police department, Jay. I guess you like them, huh? So, anyway, thank you very much. So anyway, thank you very much.
He already spoke, right?
Yeah, he did, yeah.
And then I have Peter Mitchell.
All right, be mindful of our folks with hearing deficiencies. I'll try and keep my voice up here. Uh, can everyone hear me okay? Um, my name is Peter Mitchell. I'm actually resident of the far west side of Madison, uh, Camus Lane, just off the university, if anyone knows it. Uh, it takes me about fifteen minutes to get here every morning. Um, I work two other jobs in healthcare in order to be able to be here as a volunteer. Um, I love my job and just to kind of give you an insight into kind of what we do. First thing I'm asked as a new member of our association every single morning is what do you want to work on today? What do you want to get better at? Um, what are some of the steps you want to take to improve your craft? Um, I can tell you right away that private service would not dedicate that same time to a new member. I can tell you right away that a private service would not provide you opportunities to seek out trainings on your own and afford you the funds to then complete that training. Um, I've had numerous opportunities to work with people at all levels of our service, both paramedics. I've worked with our chief a couple of times, just doing blood pressure clinics at the senior center. Um, I went toward you guys' schools and I held walkthroughs of the ambulances and all that kind of fun stuff. Again, I'm not a member or I'm not a resident of Cross Plains, but I have read through the finance committee's notes. Um, and I can just tell you right off the bat, it just it just doesn't make sense to me. Um, I think the greatest sin that a government body can take is looking for an issue where there isn't one and then trying to solve it and causing a great issue at the end of it. And I think that just seems to be on the front of things, what's happening here. I study political science here at UW. Um, this is my bread and butter. It just, it's not transparent. It's not clear cut. It doesn't provide a solution for the long term. Currently, you guys have a well-funded EMS service. You have competent leadership. You have well-staffed service and they're forward thinking. One of the things the finance committee outlines is a endeavor to look into community EMS. That's something that two of our our staff members are already certified and have undergone classes to pursue providing in financial stability into the future. We're also looking into another ambulance to provide further opportunities in terms of interfacility transports and other things that would further cement our legacy going down the line. You have a profitable, well-organized, well-driven EMS association. Don't throw wrench into words. That's my message.
All right, that is all I had as registered comments. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to make a comment? Okay, would you like to come up?
Peter Benson, one seven four six Tubbs Court, Cross Plains, regular road here. Um, I did not know I wanted to speak, but as I sit here and listen, uh, there are a couple of questions that I have. Uh, number one, I've heard a lot from people about why not? I've looked through the finance committee's report. And to me, as somebody who is unaffiliated with all of this, I don't see a why. I would very much like to hear a why this is important or urgent for village to be considered. Um, it's just not clear to me from anything that I have seen. And the people who are involved seem to feel very strongly that it's not a good idea, so I better hear a really strong why. Um, number two, a lot of strong opinions, that's clear. So if I understand this process, you guys would have a vote and then we go to listening sessions for the community, right? That's what it looks like it's designed to do.
Now, we'll talk about it when we get to the
Okay, that makes me a little more nervous.
Why not?
I I'm asking a general question for the board to consider, not a direct question. Um, how is the board proposing to formally record people's sentiments, people's thoughts on this issue, where they stand? Other than anecdotally. I think this is important enough that you need a formal process to record votes and to report back to people. And also, I would ask the board members to consider how you are going to assure me as a village resident that some sort of feedback will be solicited from the community outside of one meeting and then shared with the community before any formal action is taken. Those are my concerns after sitting here and listening. Thank you.
My name is Linda Nieber. I grew up in this town. I was conceived in this town and I have had plenty of reasons to know what kind of skullduggeries can go on on boards. Because my dad was a village president. And he got voted in after we had some city slickers be our village president for a while. So I had told my dad that this town can make you love it a lot. Or if you let outsiders who even think they've lived here for twenty-some years and know the village bring up insane ideas to save money is generally for a power grab, just like it is in any political arena. So as a person who, um, has a fiery nature, so my dad always told me to make sure I heard myself before I spoke. So I am hearing myself to say, yes, they need a different person, different liaison for the EMS court. Definitely. Also, if people who would ever want to vote away our excellent EMS service, which my family has used a lot, then I would say, when you have a problem, you call Middleton EMS and don't bother us. And keep your life in Middleton, if that's where you want to be. You're free to move. And I just want to say one other thing that only old timers will relate to this. We wanted to have the high school out here in Cross Plains for the local areas. And no, we had to go into Middleton because the money was there and it was going to help our kids get into the UW. What a crock. What a crock, what a crock. So I just want to say anytime you want to incorporate Middleton into Cross Plains, pick up, move to Middleton so you can enjoy them yourselves and keep Cross Plains the loving, hard-working community with honest people being there. But I also just want to say for all of you who knew my dad and mother that you remember what good people they were representing this community and keeping this community a community through all the bullshit that we had to listen to all the time at our house because people call up guess what? Check your own heart. If you like living here, don't let people take away things that we built. Amen.
Is there anyone else in the audience here? Otherwise we'll go online. Okay, we, yep.
Okay, so my name is Hannah Tera. I am one of your full-time staff members. I got into EMS through volunteering, actually with Black Earth Mazo. And then realized I really enjoyed it, was always driving through the community and was like, hey, I want to come out here and help you guys as well. So my primary job, in addition to running EMS calls, is actually training all of our new members. So it's really awesome. You look around the room, look at how many students are here tonight. We have students that don't have cars and they pay to Uber out. That volunteer stipend does not cover it. But Chief Alexin, Deputy Chief Pitt have created an environment that people want to come to to volunteer. Just keep that in mind that if you lose your volunteers, you're gonna lose all those students, the attitude they bring, the willingness to learn and all that experience that comes with having everybody from so many different places.
Great. Well, go to online now. I see Carrie. Would you like to speak?
Uh, yes, I would. And sorry if I have to leave in this. I'm actually currently on shift at my other station, uh, which is going through a very similar thing right now. Um, but tonight, like I said, my name is Carrie McKee and I'm not coming to you guys all as a member of EMS only, but also as a lifelong citizen of Cross Plains. Both my mother and my grandmother tonight have spoken and I also know my other grandmothers in the crowd. If that doesn't already speak to the town and village of Cross Plains, I don't know what does. Tonight, what President Jay is approaching you all with will be the end of Cross Plains area EMS. If the village of Cross Plains takes over the EMS operations, not only will it end with our district dissolving, but also put more stress, work and responsibilities on our city's current staff that they should not have to handle. I recently watched another one of my services go through the same thing. It ended in our chief resigning due to the actions of the committee and a majority of our care providers leaving to go to the other services. I urge you to listen to what he has to say, but also remember your best interest for your communities and that Chief Hallie has done a outstanding job running our department. My parents both have been serving on this department for about ten years. Through those years, even as a young child, I've watched the service go from running with eight people to now flourishing with almost fifty. I've watched our lockers in the bay to go from being bare to now being doubled up because of the amount of wonderful people we have caring for the communities. I've watched the service go from being entirely volunteer-based to now having volunteer, part-time and full-time members. We've grown in our relationships with fire and our police force to create amazing teams on calls. I've all this to say, though, as a community member and also as an active EMS member now, that it would be a shame if our village let their EMS service disappear due to one man. Every single person I work with has an incredible drive to help these people. Not one can do the job we, not everyone can do the job we do. We are here day in, day out, up all night and to ensure no one goes without care. We show up when people are having the worst moments of their lives and are the kind and calm faces that help them remember that everything will be okay. We see the worst in humanities, but also the best. We love going to our schools and educating not only the children, but also the adults. We love going to our parades and celebrating with our communities. If EMS dissolves, I as a community member am telling you right now that or if that will no longer be a thing. Private ambulance companies won't only cost your people more, but also will not be a part of the communities. Middleton, Wanakee, Mount Hore of District One, they will not be able to be here for those kinds of things. Cross Plains area EMS is not just an organization or a business or numbers on a paper. We are a family. And with all this said, I would like you to remember that we are here for you, every single one of you, twenty-four seven. We are a part of this community and family. We provide outstanding care every time we leave that station and please do not let your biasness to Jay determine the outcome of your Cross Plains area EMS. Thank you.
And then Rosalyn, would you like to speak? Rosalyn Thomas?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, my name is Rosalyn Thomas. I live at twenty fifty-one Glacier Circle right here in the village and thank you for letting me speak right now. Um, I've lived here twenty-four years. Um, just a few days ago, learned that there was a proposed takeover of EMS, which immediately sent up a red flag because generally I am never in favor of changing something that does not appear broken. And, um, it's the first I've heard. Don't know what's behind the proposed takeover, but my experience here um, has luckily only needed the EMS team once a few years ago. But in that moment, we were extremely grateful for the fast response time and the calmness and experience of the team in that very intense moment. And we feel very blessed to live in a village that has first responders right here. My husband and I are only getting older and it'll increase the potential for our need to call EMS again. And the thought of them going away is extremely scary at this point in life especially. So my request is I respectfully request that EMS be left alone. And if the board wishes to continue with the idea of a takeover, then please make it more public since a lot of us are just hearing about it, it seems. And, um, provide some opportunities before it happens, provide opportunities for villagers to get more information and express their opinions and not even villagers, but the other municipalities that also benefit from EMS being local, local here. And, um, just wanted to give my my opinion on that, that I hope that I know in small organizations and towns and any level of a board or politics, um, things can get intense and um, sometimes it's personal, sometimes it's not, but I would just hope that like things be at least slowed down and made like I said, um, more information be given to villagers and those that this would affect as residents um, before any big change is made. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have one more. Jeff, would you like to speak? Jeff D.
There we go. Hopefully you can hear me now.
Yes.
Um, I spoke last, uh, couple of weeks ago at the plan commissioner, whatever, regarding the development and the traffic and I just want to switch gears from the MTs for just a minute into the new development again because I'm hearing that Oak Valley Estates uh, potentially going up there. That'd be another phase or whatever. But also a lot of concern coming out on Military Road onto Church Street. Uh, my big concern with everything that's going on is you, there's been a traffic study, but how come we haven't heard from any local officers that actually worked the road during those times? Uh, myself being retired, I I could specifically talk about the numbers of, uh, traffic and traffic jams that go into the school in the morning on Military Road and also come out at, uh, during the evening hours or whatever. So that would be a concern of mine and also the, what I call is the dumping of the traffic on Airport Road. I think the village board needs to take into consideration and ask the chief of police and other officers that currently work those areas to come forward to the board to make an educated decision. As I know the plan commission, if they pass it tonight, it's on the village board agenda and they may pass it tonight. And I just think they're missing the boat totally by not having any kind of local input or local uh, law enforcement input. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else online that wishes to speak? All right, I think we're
All right. We will move on to the plant commission. We'll go with general business. Uh, and we'll take these in two sections. The first one is number one, discussion and possible action regarding approval of the preliminary plat and supporting documents. You guys, yeah, want to come up? All right, would you like to speak or you have a summary, whatever you want? Yeah. All right. Yep.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jeff Hayne. Um, with me is my son Kyle, Adam Watkins from Wiser Engineering, and our attorney, Robert Proctor. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the village for holding the special planning commission meeting tonight. It is greatly appreciated. Um, before I get into some of the comments that have been made tonight, I just want, a lot of people have no idea who we are and 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 that's fine and that's great. But what I could tell you is I've lived in Dane County sixty-five years. My son has thirty-three years. Kyle's fourth generation in this business. Um, I've been in the development business forty-two years. We're local people. We live six miles away. My son played, um, youth football for Cross Plains. So you know, a development of this So you know, a, a development of this size, typically you'd get folks from out of town with their high-priced attorneys coming in and this and that, and, and, and just trying to ramrod something through. We're not like that. You know, we're here to work with you. We want to, Kyle wouldn't be 40, fourth generation in the development business if something wasn't going right for, or if we didn't do it right. It's, it's, it's just that simple. We would have had bank problems. Um, municipalities would have laughed us out of their meetings. So we've done this before. I, I, you know, right, folks may just totally disagree with what we're proposing and I get it. Uh, but what I tell you is we're not out of towners trying to ramrod something through. We have history in this village with Kyle. We have a lot of friends in the village. So I just wanted to say that so you, you sort of understand who we are. Uh, again, we're not here to cause trouble and, and ultimately if this doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. You know, we can't do every deal. We get it. Um, but our record will show we work through issues. We get things done. And it's not just one-sided. It, it's a group effort. Uh, someone just made the comment about the caller or online that he wanted input from the local uh, police and things like that. Well, what we could tell you and a lot of people probably don't know in this meeting is the village meets the first Wednesday of every month with the department heads. So fire, police, EMS, they've known about this project since day one. Because we've been going through those meetings explaining what we would like to do. So it's not like we're doing something, we're dealing with the planning commission only. Uh, tonight the board obviously. No, we've been working, I think for almost a year now. And I don't know how many meetings we've gone to. It, it's not every month. But I bet we've been to four or five of these Wednesday meetings to try to work out a lot of the issues. So you know, it's not like we're just, we, we started this last week and we're in front of you and we want to get this done. No, that's not the case. We've been working on this for a year with village staff. And we are here tonight with what we've proposed. Um, I, I, I just, I, I need to say a couple of things. I wasn't, I wasn't going to say a thing tonight. But I needed to say a couple of things because there's, there's some the way I see it, the issues are traffic. The river or creek pesticides. Um, and affordable housing. You know, I apologize if I came off aloof about affordable housing. My comment about what, you know, what even is it? I bet if we asked every individual in this room, they'd have an answer. So I'm not blowing off affordable housing. It's important. It's needed. But what I would tell you early on with our discussions with the village, we, they wanted multifamily. And I said then, I said, what is that? Because multifamily could be a lot of things. Is it four-story apartment buildings? Is it duplexes? What is it? Early on, we were directed that the four-story apartment building, which obviously then you can lower rents, even though that doesn't happen because of construction costs. So when I say what is affordable housing, you know, I'm not going to surprise people by saying construction cost, interest rates and land costs right now are making affordable housing impossible. The only way you're going to get it done is with a bunch of government subsidies. So we're not against affordable housing, but we were directed that you couldn't, the, the village didn't want the larger apartment building. So I just wanted to get that out. We're not blowing off affordable housing. It was discussed early on and this is the direction the village wanted to go. Lady brought Hawk's Landing. What I would tell you is Hawk's Landing is a little bit larger than this property. Uh, it's 530 acres. And when we went through it in the late 1999 and 2000, we had more DNR oversight than anything I've ever seen. To the extent, I remember the guy's name, Bruce Moore, that we dealt. I don't know how many people in this room can remember who they dealt with 25 years ago, uh, but I do. So you know, the golf course, it's gonna have a lot of oversight from the county and the DNR. And when the person talked about in 2016, it was discovered that we didn't do everything perfectly. And we did it. I admit it. But what I tell you is we were approved by the DNR in the city of Madison to open our doors. So it wasn't like we did something and tried to sneak it through. We had approvals. That's all we can go by. As this project will be, the village will oversee it, the county will oversee it, and the DNR will oversee. It's not just a simple, okay, we're gonna go do something and no one's gonna see and check if it's done right. Because it will be. And what I tell you is the things we didn't, that came out in that 2016 study were all corrected. And if anybody has any concerns, talk to Town of Middleton. Talk to the city of Middleton. Talk to the city of Madison if we, if they have any issues with us as a development team. They're not gonna say, they're gonna say no. You know, it's like anything else. No one's perfect, but we always correct whatever they tell us to do. So that's, that, 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 I don't know, gives you a little history about, okay, yeah, we didn't do it right, but it's correct now. Um. Pesticides, it, it's huge. And with all due respect to Mr. I don't have his name right here. But um, I believe you're highly qualified person in the front row here. But to dismiss our expert, who's one of the leading experts in the United States, I'd love you to sit down with him and then tell me he's not, he's, he's somebody we just picked to have, have an expert. He's a leading expert at the University of Wisconsin, nationally renowned. We furnished the village his response to Parkinson's disease stuff. The village has it. If they haven't furnished it to you, please ask them. They'll get it to you. So again, we, we, we're doing our due diligence. The, the village requested it at the last planning commission. We, we gave it to them. So if anybody in the crowd or online wants to read it, please touch base with them. Um, and the creek. Our closest corner to the creek is 1600 feet away. What I find kind of interesting about the discussion on the creek, it's important. We're outdoorsmen. We, we understand the importance. But I just, tonight drove down this road and came back the other way. You know how many commercial properties are on this street? That everything they discharge goes right into that creek? You know how many farms go right into that creek? And all of a sudden, everyone's jumped at the gun that we're just gonna wreck this creek? Give us a chance. I mean, gosh, with all our experts, and they are experts, and the DNR and the county overseeing what we're doing, we're at 95.5% infiltration rate. We're not 100. But you know what? We're, we're continuing to try to get there, but 95.5 is pretty good. So you know, those are the major issues that I think we've done everything the village has asked us to do. And honestly, there's a lot more issues in this village than our golf course. So I mean, if they really want to worry and, well, if you want to worry about our pesticides, my point being is look what is adjacent to the creek right in the village. And, and address that because that's not good. All right. That's all I have to say. I, what I would tell you is we're in agreement with staff recommendations. And we're here to answer any questions the planning commission and board has. Thank you.
All right. So this is uh, the plan commission. So that's who has the, the floor right now. Um, do I have a motion for the preliminary plat? Or would you like to do discussion? If you do a motion, it has to be contingent on the recommendations of village staff.
I'll make a motion to have a contingent on the village, village staff.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Bill is seconding Bobby. So I have a, a motion and a second. Are there discussion from the plan? Plan members, any? Seth?
Just want to follow up on the, the traffic issue primarily. Um, the, I agree with the comments about the, the access at Church Street. We need to figure something out. Um, I don't think the, the rounds of evidence are the best solution, but I don't think we could just say uh, there's nothing that needs to be done. Because sometimes we agree the, the study that says there's the village didn't want to do uh, make any changes the last time, so we're not updating that study. So I agree that something needs to be done. Uh, that needs to be figured out whether it's as part of the preliminary plat, that's more appropriate to before final approval. Uh, I realize most of the impacts actually be from future phases. Uh, so correctly, the, the study looked at the future phase because they can figure out what needs to be done um, for the entire development. But the impacts are going to be bigger uh, when it gets to future phases. Um. I do have a couple of concerns still about the links requests.
Oh, we, that, that's
I'm into. Uh, for some people that weren't at the 11th meeting, like one thing that wasn't really well stated in, in the traffic study was that a benefit of this potential development will be a second output for the school and for the existing neighborhood uh, through the new development. And so some of the traffic that right now has to go out of Evergreen and try to turn on Church Street. Uh, we have another option of those. Maybe we'd like to, I'd like to see the village work with the school district on uh, plans for buses, pick kids, uh, drop off pickup. Actually, I think this presents an opportunity uh, to improve some of the circulation, but yes, certainly going to add a lot of traffic. I think the traffic study did a good job uh, of looking at all that. Uh. I think for the golf course and all those decisions, I guess I'd like to make it clear that we're approving, talking about approving phase one.
That's right.
Um. If Belver wants to move forward to phase one, there's no guarantee of phase two being ever approved in the golf course. That's on that. Uh, so what we're looking at right now is approving phase one though. So all the, I read some of the comments about uh, you know, adding, having CARPSI, other oversight, uh, other groups to do studies of primarily the golf course and as large as well. What's phase one is the only purpose in the urban service area right now. So for anything beyond that to get approved is gonna have to get approved by CARPSI and all those other agencies to expand their servicing. So what we're looking at tonight, I just thought that was primarily on phase one. Phase two and beyond may never happen.
That, that is correct. And thank you for stating that. So appreciate it. Kevin?
Yeah, thanks. Um, Seth, you took the words out of my mouth about phase one versus phase two. Um, I think we all realize that phase two is lingering in the background. But uh, tonight's uh, action is on phase one of the proposed development. Um. Just also wanted to state that infiltration was mentioned several times. Uh, village ordinance does state that it is, we, we seek 100% infiltration rate for developments. However, the state of Wisconsin does not allow us to keep that 100% infiltration rate. So it will at most allow for 90%. And this is at 95 or 96, I think it was. So um, the developer has met the minimum required, or I guess what, what, what the village hopes for, which is 90%. You cannot, or cannot seek 100%. Um, we'll talk about parkland dedication funds later, right?
Yes, that's one of the waivers. Yep.
And then um, uh, two more things, I guess. Uh, I would encourage sort of on that phase two uh, portion, encourage some of the local groups. I mean, obviously it's going to go through CARPSI, but uh, some of the local groups, back to uh, to you uh, to work with the developer and vice versa. So when, uh, if and when that phase two does come, that um, hopefully it comes with a solution for all parties. And then um, the third thing or the final thing I have is, is also this traffic issue. Uh, we know this phase one is going to bring play of traffic. We know there's going to be an outlet on the, on business which will help existing and future uh, traffic issues. Um, I'm still stuck at the county P intersection and what after Tony's reputation, he had one to state in public today. Uh, if he's willing and, and has the knowledge. And um, uh, and also the, and, and would also ask if the, if anybody has looked at connecting to military roads, I don't know if we talked about that last plan. So are you able to?
Yeah, go ahead, chief.
Um, obviously traffic's an issue and found it's an issue all over town. So any development, I've uh, developers, right? We've been in meetings for about a year now, uh, hearing different things. It's definitely not where it was when we first heard about it. Now we're at a, a way different space. I know that, that we definitely will be looking at outlets. We need outlets. Uh, anybody who drives past the school during a busy day sees how hard and difficult it is to come out. Um, so we will be looking at outlets and things like that, but for this phase, I, I, I think that, that it's been looked at enough and, and I, I'm comfortable where, where we're sitting.
Right. Uh, Bill or Tim, would you like to say anything? I don't want to forget you.
So this is Bill. Um, sorry. Uh, so the only thing I, I agree with but that I want to talk about is, is again, the traffic and, and I agree, I don't really like traffic circles. Uh, we've talked about traffic circles in the past in the village. Uh, and as a village, we, we never really uh, uh, preferred them before preferred uh, stop and go lights. And I think that, you know, we're, we're, we are uh, prepared to put in stop and go lights if necessary uh, at Evergreen if, you know, if that's, if that's the, the right way to go. So that's, that would be my preference uh, is to, is to not put it in the traffic circle, but in, but, but, but in stop and go. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Bill. Tim?
Tim, no, I agree. I think everything's been echoed. We're going in phase one. Focus on and um,
He's agreeing with phase one.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
All right. Uh, so let's, we're, we're gonna do a roll call vote to make sure we have the right people voting for the right, at the right time.
Right?
Yep.
Mr. Creed. Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Hillary.
Yes.
He said yes.
Mr. Thudid.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Dusty Calvator.
Yes.
Dusty Barosus.
Yes.
He said yes.
President Langford.
Yes. All right. It passed. So what we're gonna do is two, we're gonna do a two A, which is the square footage of the waiver for the square footage of the lots. And then two B will be the uh, parkland uh, or payment instead of parkland. So we'll, let's in Lou, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we'll take uh, the waiver of having lots smaller than 9,600 square feet. Isn't that what it was?
Yeah. Do you want to read it off of here?
Yes. 15A.
Yep. I got it right here. If you want to read it right off of here, Jay.
That's all right. I, I need someone.
Someone else to do.
Yeah. Well, I need someone to do a, uh, can someone do a motion that's from the plan commission? We're just doing uh, A. Isn't that A's though?
Yep, it's A.
This is a recommendation through Sonya. Uh, I was, you're
Hey, Jay.
On page 10. It's on page 10 of the pack.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we waive the um, along the area smaller than 9,000 square feet within the building line in frontage in the public street for zoning code rather than section 83 dot 83C of the subdivision code.
Thank you very much. And we have a sec.
Well, this is Tim. I'll second it.
Okay, well.
Tim's better.
Yeah. All right. So we have a motion and uh, a sec. It was, we're going with uh, Tim. So we have a motion and a second discussion. All right. Roll call vote again, just so we make sure we are hitting the right people.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes, you did.
Rusty Calvator.
Yes.
Rusty Brochus.
Bill, they're asking.
Yes.
He said yes.
Mr. Creed.
Yes.
Mr. Hillbrand.
He said.
Yes.
Yes, he said.
Yes.
President Langford.
Yes. All right, passes, all right, so the next one, B, is the parkland in lieu of parkland. Anyone want to do a motion on that?
You can just read, you can just read B.
Clarification before I make motion?
Sure.
Um, do we, can you, can somebody, uh, quickly outline what the funds can be spent on for the fees in lieu of that, uh, in lieu of? Just briefly outlined for everybody in the audience.
Uh, can be used for a multiple, I mean, I I, there are summaries. The restriction is, I believe they have to be used within eight to ten years. I think it's pretty old then. I'm mad.
And the, so the park committee, uh, recommended, uh, recommended this, correct?
Uh, Mike has, uh, heard it and he did not object to it when it was that, so. I don't know if they've actually taken it through parks and rikers. Oh, you did? Oh, okay, thank you, Cody.
Um, I will, uh, make a motion. To approve the waiver for land dedication to allow for payment of fee in lieu of parkland dedication as outlined in section eighty-three point twelve. Um, and prior to final flat approval, landowner, uh, landowner shall enter into agreement with the village regarding any table fees in lieu of that land dedication. Uh, being assessed upon the person.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and second discussion. Yeah, Joanne seconded. Seth?
I guess all part of people that. The previous meeting made a comment that I I thought we should have some parkland in this phase regardless, um. Thought about that a little bit more, and I do recognize that there's the new park, uh, just outside this development, uh, on Evergreen. Well, so, although it was a blue school, it's not too far away. Um, and so one of the benefits of this is was correctly going to, too, is. Take money instead of getting parkland in this first phase to be used towards something like the pool. So I guess I. Kind of more in favor of of allowing this, uh, rather than forcing them to put in a small top lot, which. Some people in our village seem to not like some.
All right, Kevin?
Um, I also wanted to point out that the, uh, dedication fees were recently raised in the. Park and open space plan that would have board approved in March this.
No, no, that.
Just let me finish.
All right.
Um, the, the, um, the, the park commission approved a park and open space plan in March that suggested that. The dedication fees be increased, however, that has not been, um, accepted or that has not been voted or, um, made an ordinance for the village. So this is still using the numbers from the previous park and open space plan to case anybody way and look that these numbers did not add up. With the current approved park and open space plan, that is reason why.
All right, I just want, they were not approved, they were in the recommendation of the five-year plan. Again, I hate to throw finance, but finances analyzing our costs for development, so. We're holding off for the board to vote on those until that that work has been done. All right, any other discussion? All right.
Bill, I just want to make sure Bill or Tim doesn't have anything.
Okay. Seth?
Question, Seth, computer guy, you were, um, is there a recommendation on the path that this was contingent upon the path being included as well?
I think that's part of the plat. Can I talk?
Comment.
It was a comment, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Could I? Yeah, it was a comment, well, we, on the preliminary plat that's been proposed or submitted, we have one route. Um, parks, correct me if I'm wrong, but the parks came up with a different route. Um, and originally, we were talking about ten-foot path, now the parks committee is suggesting eight feet with a new route. And we're in favor of the new route. All right, any other? All right, roll call vote.
Rusty Brochus.
Yes.
He's saying yes.
Rusty Calvator.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Thudid.
Yes.
Mr. Hillbrand.
No.
What?
Did you say no or yes?
Correct.
He said no?
I said no, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's a no vote. Yes. Motion carries, all right, plan commission, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same, so move, plan commission, thank you for coming in tonight. Okay. I guess we will take a five-minute, five-minute break.
Okay.
Thank you. Or, yeah, I have.
This is number one. We we did A already tonight. Did they?
No, they did not do it, that was just planned.
We haven't done any of the action?
No, they just.
Thank you. All right, um, we're at A, discussion and possible action regarding the approval of the preliminary plat and supporting documents. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the, um, approve the preliminary plat with.
With what?
With supporting documents on here, but with, um.
Conditional.
Self-confidence.
But that's something.
All right, I have a motion, any discussion? Sarah?
The, Seth, I wanted to make sure. A lot of people were bringing up the roundabout, my concerns about that is that. When I, if I vote yes, are we still looking at that?
Yes, that's not part of the preliminary plat. Yeah, that that was from the traffic study. Any, yeah, Michael?
I just had some questions, this, on the, on the edge of the plat over where it meets Dennis Street, they're currently. On the drawing where the zero lot line happens, I would put twelve driveways out on the Dennis, I don't. Good way to design for traffic issues of the future in the village. I believe that we're creating an issue that we have in other places automatically by improving this plat tonight, and it shouldn't be being done. How's the way I feel about that? Just letting you know, and I'm not going to be approving it, and I think that the issues that we have on Church Street are exactly what we're manufacturing. Again, they need to be internal to development, we come out into a single exit and entrance. Dangerous, you have people there. I also don't like the third of the park inside of here, you're putting a hundred and ten dwelling units, probably going to be the most dense part in this entire development. This is the affordable housing section of, probably going to be more children located down this area, and you're going to make them walk across Dennis or walk to other parks. This is probably where a park actually really does belong in this plat or possibly in a future plat, and for that reason also, I will not be supportive of that.
Okay, Cody?
Do you want me to get into, I talked about that?
No, it's up to you, sure.
So. All hundred feet, so we create a plan. Maybe two thousand feet to create mayor park, place your creek, middle school, and it's a part. Fair first. We'll see a lot of the, I agree, park, we've had, so we had a lengthy discussion from this in part, and that, uh, we figured. With the forces of those three parts, we would make schedule of those using for other park structures.
Okay, any other comments? Cameron?
I have a question, so the roundabout is not like, I guess, what would be the timeline then? You know, we're, we approve the preliminary plat, when do we think the final plat approval would be?
Well, they would have, they have to meet all those, uh, conditions, and that would be something that we would be discussing individually.
What do you mean individually?
As as a separate unit, what do we want to do with that intersection?
Who's we?
The board.
Oh.
Probably your public safety to start with, and then go to the board.
Yes, okay, I was, and that was going to be my next question, is if we could make that a public safety something, but.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's good.
I have one other.
Go ahead, Michael.
So. This is with them, you put path through this development, does that? Fall under the same thing that's happening on brewery where the village is responsible for?
Generally, that has been the practice of of the village is if it's a trail, we take care of it, if it's a sidewalk, it's the owner's responsibility.
So, rather than sidewalking both sides, we're deciding to trail even though the space exists to sidewalk, whereas on brewery, we trailed it on the one side. For removal, that gives room, I mean, why are we trailing it, I guess, is the question, and putting that burden on the village of. Snow removal when it could just be left to the homeowners. Frankly, sidewalk, especially when looking, it looks like a terrace or the terraces either way from the street. There's a danger of distance from sidewalk to road.
Okay, Cody, I'm guessing they talked about that.
And trying to continue the trail like that trail would be coming from like brewery area, got some part of the room, and then to expand. I can look it up, I'll buy it, it was just to have a trailer extension.
And also that makes it a favorite space for bikes, that's, I would really love to see our involvement of a bike thermite trail.
Yeah, I think that's why we do trails, so they're more multi-use and safer for for people. You know, I I certainly use brewery road all the time, and it is nice to have a trail. That wider width. Go ahead, Captain.
Say, it's also a continuation of that one that's already on Evergreen going by the school, which you could have fit a sidewalk there, but like I see a lot of people bike on it, walk dogs and stuff like that, where, you know. The extra room there is probably a issue.
All right. Anything else? All right, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Hey, JJ?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill.
That's, that's all right, hey, I just want to, I I I don't have a comment about this particular thing, but. If if, when the trustees are talking, if you guys really would mind making sure your mics are on so I can hear you, that would be fantastic.
Okay.
That's all, that's all I got, thank you.
Yep. All right, roll call vote, please.
Rusty Brad.
Yeah.
Rusty Borcar.
Yes.
Rusty Brochus.
Yes.
Rusty Polakowski.
No.
Rusty Borclan.
Yes.
Rusty Calvator.
Yes.
President Langford.
Yes. All right, it passes, so now we're on B, and we're going to do the same thing we did. Plan, but it'll be B one and B two. So B one will be the, um. Uh, s- square footage, lot square footage one. So, do I have a motion for that, for that waiver? I think it's page ten.
Yep, it's page ten in the packet.
I'll make the motion to approve the waiver, uh, to allow lot, uh, areas smaller than ninety-six hundred square feet. With the golden line and frontage on the public street for the zone code, rather than in section eighty-three point eight-three C of subdivision code.
Thank you very much.
I'll second that.
All right, I got a couple of seconds. Oh, Bill, then put Bill on in for a second, I didn't, okay. Uh, I have a motion and second, any discussion? Go ahead.
I was just curious on the.
Well, I think the idea is. With smaller lots, I, you can put a smaller house, then it should be cheaper, kind of like creek crossing. You know, you can debate if that happened or not, but I think that's the intent.
Okay.
Higher density also.
And, uh, fire his.
Yes. Yep, they're part of the staff meeting. All right. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Yeah.
Rusty Borclan.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Rusty Brad.
Yeah.
Rusty Borcar.
Yes.
Rusty Brochus.
Yes.
President Langford.
Yes. All right, we'll go to B two, uh, which is the. Uh, parkland, uh. Parkland dedication in lieu of of land. Anybody want to make that motion? On page ten.
I will make the motion to approve the waiver from land dedication to allow for payments or fees in lieu of, in lieu of the parkland dedication as outlined in section eighty-three point one.
All right, do I have a second? Do I hear?
Bill seconded.
You want to make note of that in the motion? Or no? Of parkland, the structure change?
No, I think, just put it in and it is what it is, and. All right, I have a. Motion and second discussion?
Um, I guess that was one of my notes, is what Cody had just mentioned, um. I don't know how this would work, but is there any way we could? Put put something in that says that the fee would go up pending, or. put, put something in that says that the fee would go up pending or contingent on in the board approving the.
Well, I guess I, what I would do is first we got to see what, what the ordinance says. That may not be placed until lots are sold or the final plat. I'm not sure when in the process that fee gets charged. So, you know, they're going to follow the ordinance, so I don't, I, I don't know the answer. We'd have to look that up. I I think it's tied when, I don't know. I just don't know the answer. So that's just where we are right now.
Do you know what the increase is?
I think it's about a thousand bucks. Again, don't pull me. It's about a thousand bucks when you look at all three of them.
He did bring that up during that party meeting and if he said, okay, that's the number that's here, but I didn't know if like for the value sampling. If we had to do it in that.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that takes its a different route and then whatever it is. And like I say, I don't know when we apply the fees. Bobby, do you know?
Two fee in lieu of would be earlier in the process. And then the echo part who must be is of the lot, so for that change.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
The end of a piece would be earlier.
Okay. We'll check into it.
In lieu of fees, I usually add according to the flat, the impact fees are the time of the building.
Well, ours are impact fees, aren't they?
This one's an.
Oh, I see because it's in lieu. I see what you think.
This is a being under chapter two thirty six for the subdivision. So the chapter.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to clarify at the start of the plan about the fees that we are collecting. You get that kind of mention that it would be, um, it's pretty open to what those fees could be used for. You mean, and then it will stay in parks? And you use core, you know, like alarm system parts.
It could, yes.
Okay.
It can have to be used outside of parks.
Okay.
Yep. Active park purposes is what it says in the ordinance.
Okay.
All right, Cameron.
Would there be any benefit to us, um, I don't know, putting something more specific to it? Just, you know, what the fees would be applied to? You know, who came up?
It's in the ordinance. I mean.
No, no, he's saying we declare where it goes. I would think that's more for parks and rep. I would not want to jump them and say, hey, this is where this money's going.
That's fair.
Yeah.
I just was thinking what happened to our neighborhood.
Yeah.
Weird and different, but you know, people thought baseball field was coming.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Parking tax fee were provided to that, so it'd be good just to, you know, transparency with the home buyers, the lot buyers, you know, where, where that money is going.
But they're not getting, the homeowners are not getting, oh, because it's not an impact fee.
It's a fee, okay.
Nope, that's all right. All right, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Borclan.
Yes.
No.
Trustee Brochus.
Yes.
He said, yeah.
Yeah.
Trustee Brad.
Yeah.
Trustee Calvator.
Yeah.
President Langfeld.
Yes. All right, it passes. Thank you, gentlemen, for comments. All right. We're at consent agenda. Upon request of any trustee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration under general business. Anybody have anything they'd like to, um, pull off the consent agenda? All right, do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion with consent.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all the poll same. All right, move on to report a villager office. Uh, the only thing I want to do is update you on village hall. We had our last uh, meeting with the architect on Wednesday. We went over the construction documents. We probably had twenty to thirty changes, um, but I think it's looking pretty good. My neighbor reviews these plans for a living for the city of Madison, so he took a look at them this weekend. He came up with, uh, three or four uh, changes that needed to happen, uh, but he did say a lot of the ones that he looks at were that have errors, the, ours did not. So he thought it was a pretty good, uh, product, so that's very encouraging. So hopefully, uh, we should be going out, uh, um, bit in the next two, three weeks and we'll talk about that later on. Village Vice President Judy. All right, other trustees. Go ahead, Sarah.
But, um, just want to give a quick shout out for our very own trust place, they raise.
Ah, good for them.
Fun. Um, and also I, um, our library, summer librarian program has been doing an amazing job. I really love how they incorporated adults into their program. Well, I'm not here for them. I'm not who you turn, but, um, it's been really great. And finally, also the alert system that the, um, pool has started this summer has been really great and really driving. There's been a few impacts, but, um, well, it speaks up. And, but it's been really helpful to know when the pool shut down or when the weather is.
All right, anybody else? All right, village administrator.
Yep, I just wanted to, um, I was notified today by, I believe it was Beckwa, someone from Beckwa, um, about the trout shocking um, that happens in the creek, um, every year. So it's happening tomorrow at two o'clock. Um, the Wisconsin, um, DNR, um, does this event, um, and so, um, they have to, um, test fish and, you know, see what the health of the stream is. Um, so if you're, you're around, you're more than welcome to attend. It's two o'clock at Xander Park. And that's all I've really got.
All right, Bill, uh, go ahead, Bobby.
Pretty mind. The quarter review will be in our next meeting, August, August fifth, so that will be from five to seven, and then those four, I mean, those are.
All right, thank you. Chief?
Want to remind everybody of our national night out event that is on seventh at five P M. You're actually at three, five to seven.
All right, thank you. Elizabeth, anything? All right. All right, we'll go to general business. Number two, discussion regarding emergency medical service report. So what we need is some clarification on this. So this is on the agenda for tonight to fill in the board where we are. So finance took up this three, four months ago to do a review and analysis of, uh, EMS. There was nothing there to, to say, hey, this has to be done. That's what finance does. There is absolutely nothing wrong to have, uh, difficult discussions on topics, and that's what this is. You will not find anywhere in that finance report a recommendation at all. That's not what finance does. Finance put together a collection of information on EMS. And there's nobody in this room that if you read that report, knew everything about EMS that's in that report. They spent a great deal going through tons of documents to pull that together. That was our phase one. Phase two of this analysis is getting out and talking to stakeholders and the community. And everybody who's been at the meetings have been, have heard that multiple times. So there is going to be many, many opportunities for stakeholders and for the community to, to speak and hear the presentation. No one besides finance who have put it together have heard any of the presentation or the information. So what I'm asking everybody, and it was mentioned numerous times, we need to have a good community discussion on this. It's important for everybody to get all the facts, listen, and then we make what we think is a good decision. There's absolutely nothing wrong with having continuous improvement ideas. That's what local government should be constantly doing. Looking at different aspects of government and services and looking, can we improve? Are there efficiencies? Are there ways of doing things different? We should not be afraid to look at that. All right, I have no problem taking the hits. You know, I, to get the community like this, we had a hundred and fifty people tonight. Perfect. I think that is absolutely fantastic. Now what we have to do is go to the next step and listen from the finance committee and see what they've come up with and talk about it. All right, that's what we need to do. So in August and September, we will be doing that. We will have a meeting. Uh, the finance meets August fourth. At that time, we will hopefully have pretty much a finished product for the presentation. And then we will go out and speak to anybody that wants to hear the presentation. Tomorrow, I'll be sending out the report to all members of the townships, to EMS chief, um, to our police chief, because public safety wants it. I can tell you right now, we're already on their agenda for August nineteenth. We will set a date in September for a community meeting, and we can hear both of the sides to this. Right now, we're hearing from only one group of stakeholder. It's a bigger issue than that. It's a much bigger issue. There's a community and other people that need to look at that, and all I'm asking, because I, I don't have a decision right now myself. I'm not cited one way or the other. Right? Hey, you know, you guys can say what you want, but that's the bottom line. Now it's my turn to speak, all right? I respected you and listened, so now it's my turn to speak. So we will have that, that discussion. There is nothing that was hidden behind here. The reason they're so familiar with what's in the report and stuff is because they have been monitoring the finance. We have done it in the open. You can go back to finance, uh, meetings for the last three, four months, and you'll see. It, it's, it's not a hidden. There was nothing done behind closed doors. We will certainly do a presentation if the district board wants it. No one's going to be turned down. We'll go to social groups. That's what our next step is. We want to move now from the data to the presentation, and then in September and October, the board will have the discussion, and then they will decide on what they feel is best. So tonight, what was there is they have done this. I have heard from EMS, so we will put an option four inside the report that says stay the same. Has that been done already, Bobby? Okay, um, so that'll be, and that'll be sent out, so that, that part of your feedback has been taken. We had, we had the financials in there to begin with, but then we pulled them out. I think we'll put up, probably put them back in for the presentation, since that seems to be a really high, um, desire to see that, and I have no problem with that. So we'll probably add that to, uh, the presentation. So again, tonight was just, it's, as you can see, a, a, a discussion, and that's what it was. It was just a time to inform the board where finance is. No, we're not taking questions. We had public comment. I'm not going to get into that. You can have that question when we do a presentation. So for the board here, it's more to fill you in on where we're at in the process and what you can expect in the future. There. Anybody would like to speak? All right. So we're good to move on then. All right. So item three. Discussion and possible action regarding granting authority to issue documents for bid for the new village hall in police department building. Once appropriate clearance are received.
I could do this.
All right.
Yep. So as Jay was discussing, um, we had a meeting with Wold, our architect for our new building, um.
My mom was told my EMS helped him.
Okay.
She's like a walker and stuff.
Sure. Why don't you bring that story when we have a meeting?
We had EMS police department, didn't get rid of the EMS.
We're not getting rid of anything. We're not getting rid of any. Read, Doug, read the report. All right, have someone.
All right. Um, so we'll go back to, so this is regarding the issuing bid documents for the new village hall and department. As Jay had mentioned, um, we had a meeting with Wold, our architect and engineer for the new building, um, last Wednesday. Um, and so we, um, reviewed construction documents, um, very thorough construction documents, hundreds of pages, um, and the project is now entering the bidding phase. So as Jay said, we had a couple of things we needed them to clear up, um, and had a couple of additions, um, that his neighbor picked up on as well. Um, so we are, um, we are hoping that we can get, um, get approval to go out for bid, um, once those recommendations have been completed, and we see those in the construction documents that we could then, um, go out for bid. Um, there, so the current timeline has it that there would be a bid review in late August um, with a recommended bidder presented at the September village board meeting. So, um, so yeah, we're just looking for recommendation or, or, um, for approval to go out for bid once the appropriate clearances are received.
All right, do I have a motion?
What specifically is going to go up for bid?
The construction documents. So it'll be for the whole construction of the building.
Okay.
The last step.
Mm-hmm. Yep, and there are, the construction documents are available too at village hall. If you want to stop by, if you hadn't had a chance to look at them, you're more than welcome to come in and take a look as well.
All right, do I have a motion?
I will make the motion uh, for us to, um, grant the authority to issue documents for bid for the new village hall and police department building once appropriate clearances are received.
All right, do I have a second?
All right.
All right, a motion, a second, any discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
What are the clearances?
Well, what we did is we sat down with them on Wednesday, and we went page by page. And then there were, um, there were like twenty, thirty recommendations. We want to make sure those are all in, incorporated into the, the bid documents before. And he, they couldn't get that done before this meeting.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Just one other comment in this. Now, I brought it up at kind of the last meeting to, um, and I think you're, you know, what you had said Jay last meeting, right? You kind of got to get the, the bid to, to make any decisions, but um, you know, if it's really hot, I think I won't obviously support, uh, approving that bid and, um, you know, I look forward conversations on alternatives at that time.
Yep. Fair enough.
Right, it says, or Cameron, on that statement that the bid is excessive or even about that I don't feel appropriate spending for the new building. I would like to pursue alternatives also.
Absolutely. I think all of us are in that boat. There are limits on what we can afford. Absolutely. All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All the polls same? Still moved? All right, number four. Discussion and possible action regarding award of contract for twenty twenty five, uh, street maintenance projects, and they're listed A, B. We're just going to take them all. All right. There's no reason to separate.
What you're saying, terms of agenda.
What's that?
You were talking about the agenda, not the alternates.
Oh, no, no, no.
Cut me off or. Uh, all right, I'm here on behalf of Brian. Um, he couldn't make it tonight, but, uh, we received bids, um, on the twenty fourth for various areas in the village for, um, spot repair of curb and gutter, some fine drilling and base repair and essentially asphalt paving um, for calendar twenty twenty five. Uh, it was broke into a base bid and then three different alternates and a supplemental bid item package through each one, because they're kind of unique. So the base bid was from Sylvia Pine Way or on Sylvia Pine Way from Caesar Street to American. from Caesar Street to American Legion Drive, Ulela Street from fourteen to Lewis and Bear Street from Essert to Stumpf. Um, that number came in at two hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and three dollars from Payne and Dolan. And the pre-bid estimate for that was two hundred and twenty-one thousand. So, um, right on budget there, slightly less. Then as budgets allow, we like to have some alternates so that you have different options on if there is some additional funding available. Alternate one was Saint Francis Street from Stumpf to two hundred and fifty feet south of Creekside. Um, that was a forty-eight thousand dollar alternate. Alternate two is miscellaneous patches. Um, those are various areas around the village that have been, um, not yet patched from water main breaks last season. And then alternate three was for the treatment plant driveway. The theme, as I understand it, has been kind of wait for the contractor to be in town as they're able to do patching. So what we've added is, is a supplemental bid item total, which establishes pricing for twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven patches. So there is no defined scope for that yet. Um, but at least dollars sitting there that you could call Payne and Dolan and do a patch in twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven, if you so desired. Is that?
No, help me with that. Go ahead. Say that again.
Yeah. Yeah, I have to. It's unique.
Yeah.
So all of the work we're talking about right now is for twenty twenty-five.
Right.
And that would be base bid and any three of the alternates in any combination. The supplemental bid item total, you, you don't have where your next water main break is going to be. But we have a unit price for square yards of asphalt to be replaced in twenty twenty-six, if you need it, and in twenty twenty-seven, if you need it.
From the, these companies?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what that hundred and two thousand is. So we.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, okay. Now I'm following.
We, let's just sort of totals. You've got two hundred square yards of less than ten yard pore and ten to thirty yard pore. So you've essentially got four hundred yards to play with in twenty-six and twenty-seven. You may use zero, you may use four hundred and one. But this establishes pricing so that you can make the call to do the patches instead of waiting until the next project is over.
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah, now, now I understand. I.
So the, the scope for twenty twenty-five is bare, uh, excuse me, base bid and then any of the three alternates that this board decides. If you would like to establish pricing and be able to pick up the phone and call and use twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven, twenty-seven supplementals that are in there. Um, again, just so that you have established pricing. You don't, you're not committed to using those.
Okay.
You can still call somebody else and see if their pricing is better. Because it, quite frankly, it is a little bit high. But it's a number that you have. It's established and it would be held, they would hold to that because of the contract. So if that's clear, um, I guess from our perspective, the base bid again was lower than, um, estimate. Alternative one is, uh, decent but slightly high. Alternative two and three are good pricing. And then the supplemental, again, if you can, um, it seems like a good idea to have pricing for future patchwork. You would award that in May or May ninth.
Okay. So, but we don't pay it, right?
Correct.
It's just, it's on a, on a book that.
It is all a unit price contract, so they only get paid for the work that's performed.
All right, all right. And if we, the, when you say pre-bid estimate, is that what we put in the budget then? Or is?
I think you have two, what did we say? Two hundred and fifty is your budget?
Two fifty, okay.
I can't speak to.
No, no.
Much gets rolled over or any of that. I think.
We haven't done any borrowing yet this year.
Right, right, right.
So we could approve more than.
No, no, but I was just wondering what we had approved in this budget last year for this. Yeah, yeah, two fifty. I, that's, I just, the two twenty-one, I'm not really.
That was, the two twenty-one is our estimate based on.
Oh, I.
Don't put Brian and Matt defined and the nerds calc in the numbers. We figured it'd be right around two twenty-one.
Well, so we can clearly do, uh, alternate two and three for sure. That's two thirty. So that's twenty, and then we can do almost, uh, half of the forty-eight. There'd be twenty-eight thousand dollars more to do all of them. Unless my math is off, right? Seven to two seventeen plus eight is.
You're supplementing the supplemental bid then?
No, that's not, we don't pay that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't pay this.
We don't pay it.
I, I heard that, but we, I mean, we pay it if we use it though, right?
In twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be a future.
That's a, what they did is they did for future pricing, so they can do the patchwork, so that it doesn't have to come here and do the, like the eighty-nine hundred.
But when we do the twenty-six budget, in, and, I, that potentially heats up, then some of that, you know, blanket quarter million we usually do every year for road work.
No, it would, if, if, if we're, if it was similar to this, it would, let's say it was exactly, it would be nine, about nine thousand. We'd only use nine thousand of the hundred and two. It's used for patchwork. If, if, am I rea, am I understanding?
I guess, and I, I don't want to try to define how you guys do your budgeting, but if in twenty-six, you have your quarter million that we're talking about as your reoccurring line item, if you have one or twenty patches to deal with, you've got pricing established to then use against that two fifty. So it's kind of a unforeseen budget item, I guess. You're not, you're not planning for a certain length. You're not hoping for no breaks.
Right, right.
But instead of leaving it, we can tell the next time there's a project and we can piggyback off the contractor being in town.
Okay.
You can get on it instead of having to gravel, until now.
Okay. And I guess just one final question. Um, do the, the price delta on alternative two and three from Payne and Dolan compared to the others is pretty substantial to give? Any like, any like a why that happened?
We saw the same thing and they're comfortable with their numbers.
I, can I, can I, I think it might be because they're in town already working, like they're doing all the church parking lots right now. So just like when we did the parking lot by the bank, we got that really cheap because they were already in town. All the equipment was on the other side of the building. So they don't have.
But you're right.
And they're good with it? Then, I mean, I'm, I won't.
Yeah, that's the first thing that we do when we see this is, did you miss something? Are you comfortable with this?
Missed a zero.
Yeah. I, I guess I, I, I'm, I'm speaking that we should do them all for, for the price that we're getting. You know, if, if the other companies are in the twenties and we're getting it for eighty-nine, I think we should, we should take it.
You say all?
I, I would do.
Two and three?
I would take one, two, three.
Yeah. This is what you're over here.
Yeah, two and three already within the budget. You can add.
Twenty-eight, eight.
You can add one, alternate one for another twenty-eight buck, twenty-eight thousand dollars.
I just did the math and this is so, because we have two fifty allocated. It's if we did all of this, if we did base bid alternates one, two, and three, this is how much additional cost we'd be looking at. Yeah.
And where's the money going to come from?
Pretty bad. It's just at the curve there.
Bobby, can you answer that one? Bill wants to know where the money is coming from.
Um, so we either, like, if we haven't done any borrowing yet this year, so we could borrow out. Um, there is some fund balance in the capital budget currently. Uh, and then there's also the excess general fund balance that's been sitting out there. Uh, but I think that's more of a bigger discussion if we want to kind of save the fund balance towards the building project. You know, it, it's first, you borrow the money now or you borrow, right? If you pay cash, they gotta borrow more later or you borrow out when their cash hurts.
I would agree, but the difference is it would be better to borrow more now than next year when we're tying it in with much larger potential borrowing. That'll make it higher for taxpayers to raise. So I think we should borrow what we need to this year for these projects and save that money for the twenty, twenty-six capital projects. That would be my recommendation.
I guess I would agree.
Sure, but wouldn't you also just skip alternative one and then be under budget, not have to borrow anything?
Oh, no, no, we have to borrow. That money's not sitting in the bank. We just approved the, the borrowing of it.
Well, you know, I don't know, looking at the next one, so. Whatever the, there's an item, you know, on, on expected costs, I don't, I don't, I don't know if we, I, I, I don't know if I'm comfortable of going, you know, almost thirty thousand dollars over budget.
I'm fine with borrowing the extra twenty thousand dollars to do all alternates. I must borrow.
All right. Can I have a motion? The motion would be.
Yeah, go ahead. To, motion to approve the award for contract of twenty twenty-five street rehabilitation maintenance projects, the, all, all of the things listed, the base bid, alternate one, two, and three, and the supplemental bid total.
Yeah, no, that'll work. Do I have a second? Do I have a motion in a second? Any more discussion? Go ahead, Bobby.
So was that motion?
Yeah, that's what I forgot. Yes. I, I forgot to say boo, Payne and Dolan. I knew there was something I was forgetting. I was like, there's something I'm leaving off. To answer your question, Bill, yes, it's, the, the motion is to take Payne and Dolan's bid for the base bid, alternate one, two, three, and the supplemental bid.
Right. I just didn't hear Payne and Dolan. That's all.
Yeah, yeah. Payne and Dolan.
Payne and Dolan.
Payne, my, my error.
Yeah, well, that's why I was like, I thought I was leaving something at it.
All right. Uh, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah.
Let's see, Borhart. Yeah. Let's see, Brokus.
Yes.
Let's see, Pomakowski.
Yes.
Let's see, Borblun.
No.
Let's see, Cal later. Yes.
Yes. All right. Number five. Uh, discussion and possible action regarding award of contract for twenty twenty-five sidewalk replacement services.
Yeah, but I can't pull it out because it's, wasn't provided.
So we started this process two years ago, I believe it was. Uh, and so today, we ended up getting one bid late, um, through our galley and bowl galley, I guess. Um, that came in at thirty-two thousand dollars. Um, and our proposed estimate was twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, so I guess this is just approving, moving forward with the sidewalk replacement program policy and starting to approving the cost of the removal and replacement, and then getting letters out to residents.
All right. Do I have a, a motion?
Can I ask some questions first?
Sure, go ahead.
So, so you had one person submitted bid for this? That you just said, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so then, all the list of, um, issues found are, the cash can see here. So we have a bid for thirty-two K to do all of that.
Yep.
Following, correct, okay.
Correct.
And then, but our sidewalk policy, eh, we have to reach out to the, the resident. They can choose to fix it themselves or pay fifty percent of.
Yep.
The, the cost of things.
Yeah.
Just every village resident said, sure, fix it, I'll pay fifty percent. The villages would be paying half of thirty-two?
A little more than half because we have some areas that are owned by the village, like, like around brewery, that sidewalk is ours, so we'd be, so it's not quite fifty-fifty. Um.
But it's close.
Yeah, but it's pretty close.
Hey, hey, Matt?
Yeah.
So there's that, there's on this, there's a sidewalk. I, I didn't see it on your list, but the sidewalk on Bourbon, pretty close to the kennel, you know, has been raised up about three, four inches. Who takes care of that? Is that the village or is that the kennel or the business in front of that sidewalk?
Uh, I would have to look at that. I, I think that's outside the scope of phase one right now. Um, so phase one is just, I, I think it goes onto Bourbon Road a little bit, but not quite that far. They, the contractors, they, they have a computer program that they put in information as they go. And when they hit a certain benchmark, they stop.
You know what I'm talking about though, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Bill, I don't think that area was examined. That's in a different phase. So I don't think any of that's been dealt with yet.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that sidewalk going to get repicked or replaced or is it going to stay like that?
It will stay like that until they, I don't know when that year is evaluated.
It, it should get evaluated this year and then next year.
Did you hear that? It's going to get evaluated this year then?
I did, I did, yep.
Okay.
Yep, I, I got it. I got it.
We have a ballpark for some of the bills, uh, some of these residents with the spread two bags. He's been working at eighty-five point six square feet. Sidewalk replaced eighty point four, but I have no idea what that.
So on the high end of a six inch thick sidewalk, it'd be eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents per square foot. So if you.
So like, there's one, there's one that's sixty-five point five two square feet. Like I gave away.
Eighteen seventy-five, what was the square foot?
Uh, two, maybe.
Eighty? So to replace that square would be. All right. Eighteen seventy-five, that'd be square feet. So the contractor cost for, would be fifteen hundred. Yep. And so the homeowner would be seven fifty and the village would be responsible for seven fifty. I think that's more of an extreme case, but yeah.
Right. I just, I just picked two of the highest ones.
Yes.
I can imagine if I got a bill in the mail for seven hundred and fifty dollars and this is probably going to seem unexpected, like, you know, it's just my guess was we changed the policy, I think, a couple of years ago, but you know, I don't, I don't know how much that has circulated or whatever.
Yeah, and we'll include the policy too in our mailers as well, just so everyone is aware that, you know, it was recently adopted, you know. Any other questions? Discussion? We get a motion yet?
Uh, no, we have not. Do I have a motion?
One quick question.
Go ahead, Cody.
I don't think you played in part. First, that's when you, that's your panel, if that's covered under a mortgage, it's been spent three to four years in support.
That, I'm not sure on.
Let me check the warranty.
Yeah.
Was the thirty-two thousand bid the only bid we got late?
Yes. And it's from our galley, um, town and country. They worked with our galley before. Um, and they thought the cost per unit was within line, what they expected.
All right. Do we have a motion?
We'll make the motion to approve the award of the contract for twenty twenty-five sidewalk replacement.
Do I have a second? All right. I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Polls the same?
Aye.
Okay, hang on here.
Too nay.
Okay, it's, it's aye instead of nay to make it easier for the reporter. So there were two? Okay, thank you. All right. Six. Discussion and possible action regarding emergency and maintenance needs for sewer backdoor truck.
Go ahead, Matt.
So we were out on an active backup call and the sewer jetter truck, I don't know how familiar you guys are with it, um, it cleans the lines of the sewer mains. The pump on that went out and so it was no longer to hold. Usually it holds two thousand PSI pressure. It, it would only go to two or three hundred PSI. So we took it down to McQueen, who we got it from and does a lot of our major maintenance. And they said that the rotor. Rudder pump went out in it and refilled that would be eighteen thousand three hundred and thirty two dollars and fifty cents.
About, what's a new one cost?
Um, it was over fifty.
Really? How much is a truck, how much is the whole truck?
Eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand.
Really?
Wow. So they were impressed that the truck being twenty years old, it's been kept up in very nice condition, um, which is then. Below that, um, we have a bunch of maintenance needs, that would be nice and, and we can add and subtract or subtract some of those numbers. Um, I'm sure you probably want to do it individually. Or do you want to do it all, all as one? You just want to concentrate on the emergency repair right now?
Okay, when you say, I, you're, you're talking about rebuilding the, the motor?
That's the emergency, that's the eighteen thousand three thirty two.
Okay.
About the tires, oil, filters increasing. Yeah.
That's additional.
And, and there's some. Some we can pull out of that to bring that fee down, but just that. It's down there, the truck itself is in good shape, to save a trip fee and downtime, just while it's down there to. Bring it up. Or when would it need an oil change? Anyway.
Yeah.
Three years or is that?
Yeah. And, and, don't you have, and again, just. You have a maintenance budget, right? Isn't that for oil changes, greasing and tires of your vehicles or no?
Of a normal truck, yes, um, to this side, I mean, if you look at some of the line items of. Of this. Um, it gets pretty expensive and it's not. Not a typical thing that a normal mechanic would encounter.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not looking at that, I'm just thinking you've got the oil change and filter, that has to be built into, don't you do that once a year on the truck?
Not on that truck, that doesn't get used as much as.
Okay.
A typical plow truck would.
Okay, and then it's ETC? Is that from the list? The table when you looked at the twenty one twelve, and it has tires, oil filter, greasing and then ETC?
That was just, I didn't want to list.
Okay.
Every single.
But it's everything that's in there, okay, gotcha.
So, like. The one inch by eight hundred foot hose for three thousand one hundred and thirty dot, thirty dollars. That could probably be taken out and the tires. Um, the steering tires are the most important, but since it's down there, we just had him quote all the tires, so I think there's. I recommend doing it all since it's down there, but if we want to. Cut stuff back, we.
May I ask, what are the expenses that we incur transporting it back and forth?
Uh, the main thing is downtime, if, if we get a backup right now, um, we have no way to help relieve sewage from going into a house.
But do we know what the cost is for it, us to take it there? We, we drove it ourselves.
Yeah, so it'd be two guys going to Menominee and back, essentially.
More of the. It's more than that.
Yep. Right, okay. But, but I mean, that's two people, one day, right? Pretty much, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Three or four hours together. Um, it's like an hour and a half. Oh, it's not.
Back and forth, back and forth, it's about three hours.
I, I think we gotta, you know, for me, just get it done.
And that comes out of the sewer fund, right?
Yeah, the sewer utility.
Yeah, but. And, I mean, okay, it doesn't get an oil change every year, because I'm sure we're not putting a ton of miles on it. Yep. So I guess the tires in particular, those seem to be adding on probably the lion's share of that. Last part. Yep. I mean, if we're not putting a lot of miles on tires, because it's just, you know, touring around a couple of blocks in town every once in a while.
They're pretty bad.
The tires have.
It's not necessarily the miles.
Yeah, it's all old there.
All the tires, that's it.
Joe?
They're original.
They're original.
Okay.
That's what you gotta worry about it, low cost on someone's face.
Yeah.
So they're twenty year old tires.
So are, so are these.
Um, back from the, the, the router pump, were all these other changes what they recommended?
Yes, they went through and.
This all, yeah, like, yeah. All this upgrading, if you want to keep it running and everything.
Yeah, and it's, it's just overall good maintenance, uh.
Right, now I can work.
Hundred and forty grand, that's thirteen hundred? Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with doing it all, I got nothing.
All right, make a motion then.
I motion to repair the backdoor truck. Uh, rebuild the router pump and tire oil filters, greasing, et cetera, the other twenty one thousand dollar. Item.
Okay.
Oh, that's fine.
That's fine, do I have a second?
Okay.
I have a mo- uh, motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls the same? All right, so moved. All right, number seven, discussion and possible action regarding.
Thanks.
Vil- village ordinance, twenty two point two one fireworks, Cameron, this one's all yours.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Hopefully it'll be quick, okay.
Well, that's funny, we got border review here.
Lovely, okay, maybe we'll. That for. For the, okay. Uh, so our firework ordinance, I think it's just worded a little funny that, um. Makes it a little hard to, for someone just like reading it to kind of understand. Not illegal, and I've received a number of questions over the years on. That, I'm trying to find the spot, I highlighted it, but now I'm not finding it. Uh.
It's twenty two point two one.
Yep.
I haven't scrolled down far. There we go, found it, um. It, so, I'll, I'll just read the whole thing. No person makes that expose offer for sale, use, keep, deter or explode any fireworks, except toy pistols, paper caps, sparklers and toy snakes unless he or she has a firework permit. Uh, the term firework is used in this section is a term defined in, uh, hundred and sixty seven dot one zero of Wisconsin State statute, so. If you leave out that last sentence, which I think most people do. Um, you just see no person may sell exposed offer for sale, use, keep, deter or explode any fireworks except for toy pistols, paper caps, sparklers and toy snakes. And so I get a lot of questions, they're like, I just spent a hundred dollars on fountains at Costco, they're just like fountains that sit on the ground. Can I use them? And the answer is yes, because if you dig further and get into the Wisconsin State statute, uh, hundred and seven. Dot ten, they have like, here's the definition of firework. And then it has like a bunch of, you know, except for this, 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 there's like twenty things, and you know, there's, you know, basic problems and little things in there. Um, so it would remain illegal even by today's, by Wisconsin State statute, one, six, seven, dot ten. Firecrackers, bottle rockets, anything that goes up in air and or explodes, but fountains. Spinners on the driveway or whatever, even though those are not. Toy pistols, paper caps, sparklers or toy snakes, they would be fine, even in our current ordinance, I just think it's confusing. So I'm wondering if there's interest in rewording it.
Well, I, I guess I'd ask, have you taken this to public safety?
No.
I would think maybe that's what the board would do, refer to public safety, come up with what you think it should read and then have a public hearing. At public safety. And then whatever that comes out of that, then bring it up to the board, that would be my recommendation. All right, then I'll make a motion that item seven is referred to the public safety committee. For, uh, discussion and, and action. Do I have a second?
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion and second any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Same, so move. All right, I'm doing a time check, we're on eight. It is nine twenty four. Um. As you know, because we've looked at the sign ordinance quite a bit, and this is kind of the final draft that. Uh, Carly and I did, do you want to do that or should we postpone it to the next? I don't know if we'll get through it in a half hour. Cameron?
I think we should postpone it to the next meeting, uh, we could probably, well, and I, I guess with, I don't know what else we have on. We're coming for August, but with border review. Maybe we want to consider two meetings that month, if we have a lot of books, I don't know.
I, I don't think we're gonna have a lot on the books unless, you know, a lot of this other stuff is getting. Wait, you know. Till we move to the next, so, what's that?
Talk about C I P.
Yeah, we have, certainly have that on, but again, that's a pretty basic one too.
This is just distribution.
This is just, we're not talking about it. This is, you just get it, now you have a month to look it over and ask questions.
Got it.
So, uh, I can make a, I make a motion to postpone item eight. Which is regarding the proposed chapter eighty seven, sign ordinance revision to the next board meeting. All right, I have a motion in a second, any discussion?
I was just gonna mention that I will, uh, it's still a little bit, there's some red lines in the version that I had in the packet, so I'll have a clean copy as well for everyone, for that meeting.
And again, make sure you look at, because there's decision making items on. Like three or four items, so. Okay, um, everybody should be looking at, uh, twenty six to twenty thirty capital improvement plan, um.
Wait, 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 you have to have a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't I? Oh.
Thanks, Bill.
I'm sorry, thank you, Bill. It's getting a little lit. All right, so we have a motion in a second, any discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Thank you, Bill, all right, now, number nine is, uh, the capital improvement plan, take a look at that. Uh, no discussion tonight, it'll be discussed. Um, at, uh, the next, uh, meeting. Future agenda item. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Do I have a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. The same, all right, thank you very much.